I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, do we have any revisions or additions to the agenda?
I was gonna recommend we focus on the priorities, but I guess now we can have a normal meeting. I think we've talked with some board members, I think we should pull the development report to a discussion item, and we should pull the budget amendment for additional staff to an action item from the consent agenda.
Any objection? Okay, so we'll revise the agenda accordingly. And next, we have minutes. Let's see, the minutes are from the regular meeting, August 13. Are there any revisions, additions to the minutes? They'll be approved as presented. And we have minutes from the work session on August 26. So they'll also be approved as presented. And that brings us to the spotlight.
All right, we have Westchester today. We may or may not have TVs and things for you. You may have to improvise a little.
We were ready to improvise.
At least we have lights.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So when we were thinking about what we wanted to share, being September, new into the year, I started to think about a learning event that has truly affected the educational experience and success of every student in our school. And the one that came to mind automatically was the third grade expedition from last spring. So in collaboration with the Decatur Education Foundation and the Zara's Fund Arts Infusion Grant, these teachers and artists put together an amazing learning experience for our students unlike any other that I have been a part of. So I'm excited that you get to hear a little bit from them about the deeper learning that happened in our classroom. Even though this team is no longer together at Westchester, you can see by their attendance here today how passionate they are about EL education and about our kids. They are now influencing the lives of City of Decatur students and other buildings, and still at Westchester. So I would like to introduce you to everyone. We have Don Steven, Lori Fricks, Stacy Foster, we have Erica Shannon, our resident artist, and in a little bit, you'll hear from Nia Schuler and Gail Rothman.
All right, so with my backup plan here. So our expedition last year, we went through two case studies. The first case study, the kids, we did a parallel study with homelessness and explorers, because the American explorers are crazy hard. It was a long time ago, and the kids like never could really wrap their head around like American exploration. So our guiding questions were, how does a person's physical environment affect their ability to survive? We also did a little tug-of-war with, were early American explorers heroes or villains? So we really looked into like both sides of the story, because kids get one version of it if they don't look deeply into it. And how do people slash groups of people change when they face adversity? So during this time, the kids did book club investigations of current issues with homelessness while studying what happened with the explorers taking land from others. So that was the first one. And then the second case study, we looked into the setting up of the Americas with British colonial America and homelessness now. We continued the focus there. And so we studied the same guiding questions. The only one that was a little different was, what were the reasons for the successes and failures of the people that set up the colonies and where they set them up? So we really investigated that, and it was a great connection between homelessness now and homelessness because people moved into other people's land. So it was really a great adventure. And we have really amazing pictures to show you.
Very abstract.
So our culminating project was to build a shelter. And we built a structure, we had the materials delivered straight from Lowe's, and we built a structure, the third graders assembled it. They did all the nailing, painting, putting up all the different panels just right outside our classrooms. And then after we made each panel, we assembled it on the playground with some parent volunteers.
In eight days?
In eight days. Eight days, yes.
So the, it's actually called a hut. The hut was, is now lived in. The hut was then deconstructed. We constructed it so that the kids could see the final product, see all the panels that they built, put together into a home. The hut is, was moved by a group called Mad Housers. We worked in collaboration with Mad Housers. They came, kicked off the event, the whole unit with the kids, spoke with the kids about homelessness, answered their questions about people who are homeless truthfully and honestly. And then the hut was taken apart by Mad Housers and taken to the Perkerson House, which is a 501(c)(3) in southwest Atlanta. It's a transitional living community for people who are homeless and moving out of drug addiction. So connected to Perkerson House is a Mad Housers community, a living community, much like the communities that we all live in. The people who are chronically homeless have a connection of Mad Housers huts there. And so there's a man who lives in the Westchester hut decorated with the Westchester handprints. Inside, it says, "We love you," and it has their artwork and their signature, and it is his home. Yes.
I didn't know we were gonna be facing this way. And from the generous grant from DEF for a teaching artist grant infusion program that Gail and Nia will talk about in just a moment, I was able to come in from these amazing teachers, having the wherewithal to bring in an even deeper level of the material. I came in and brought movement as a concept to all the guiding questions for our case studies. So in addition to the reading and the writing and the exploring about the European explorers and Native Americans and homelessness, all really abstract thoughts that can be so difficult, we, I was able to layer in kinesthetic movement approaches to that so that we were able to connect those concepts through items like contraction and expansion. So yes, you have to get small, like the Native Americans did when they, when the European explorers came and expanded into this new land, and their land became smaller at that point. So we were able to tie that in with those concepts, and it just brought such a deeper level of meaning to the subject matter, and it really lended itself to all the different styles of learning within the classroom. So that was really exciting to see this expedition that everyone had done so much with, and it just was a fully integrated experience in addition to that. So it was a very exciting time to work together. And I would love to show the video now. However, Gail and Nia are the best at explaining the whole program. So thank you.
Good evening. Great to see you all. We were thrilled to hear that this was gonna be the spotlight from Westchester tonight. I just wanted to give you a little bit of the history of how these grants came about. They're a little bit different. It does feel weird to face here.
I know.
I know, that's part of the thing, that's a little. The grant, many of our programs, as you know, and our scholarships and our grants come about through, oftentimes through tragedy and through people looking for a way to channel their grief into something beyond themselves. And so this, these grants really came about from the family of Zari Hawthorne, who was a sweet six-year-old who attended Oakhurst Elementary in kindergarten. Her family then spent a year in China, and she passed away during that year, and they had ties to Decatur. So when they came back, they connected to DEF, and they said they wanted to do something to honor her legacy. She was a prolific artist of all different types, all different media. She was a dancer, a painter, sculpture, and just got lots of joy out of that. And so they really wanted to channel that to a broader, to our broader community. Started off doing, and they still do, fund a scholarship for a younger student to have an art experience who wouldn't be able to afford it, but then they really wanted to do something deeper. And because of some synchronicity that happened, we did a pilot program with Westchester two years ago, and they were looking at bringing in an artist to work with their teachers. The thing that I have learned about arts infusion, which is the basis for these grants, is that it's very different than an art experience. So when my kids were in school, they often got to learn something and then have a culminating art experience, which is wonderful. That's great. You learn about minerals and rocks, and then you have a metal pour as sort of a culminating, exciting thing to do. This is very different. This is the arts embedded into the planning process. When the teachers start to think about, okay, these are the guy, you know, this is what we're trying to do, so these are the standards we're trying to meet. The artist is in on that from the beginning, and so they really are deeply embedded. So you have things like movement or dance or sculpture embedded into math and fractions and history and things that you might not put together, but that when you have brilliant teachers, educators working with brilliant artists, sort of the magic happens in that planning process, and then the kids benefit. So we are funding another round of these grants to the tune of $20,000. The grants can cost about $5,000 per school, so that allows us to expand to several schools. And the other thing that's really important as we look at this, that was well said in the video, is, one, it reaches all types of learners who may not be reached in the more traditional methods, and really the equity piece, because for us, this is an experience that some of our families can afford to get outside of school time, but not all of our families. And so we really think it is a great way to sort of give that broader educational experience to all of our kids. And again, these teaching teams are just amazing and come up with these great ideas. I'm gonna pass it over to Nia to talk a little bit about the two other schools that benefited and moving forward, what we're looking at doing this year. But thrilled by the, this year's pilot, it was Pilot 2.0. The reports back from everybody involved were really, really amazing, and the principals really got behind it. And it really, again, the magic happened for the kids, which is awesome. Thanks.
Thanks. The, in addition to the project at Westchester, we had projects at Oakhurst and Glenwood. And each of them were tasked with creating a journey with their artist, and so that the culminating event was what the parents were able to see. And I know this is true in expeditionary learning as well, and trying to tease the two out is sometimes an interesting part of the process. So at Glenwood, there was a sculpture garden, and it was illustrating the journey of the life cycle of plants. And that stays as a permanent structure. At Oakhurst, the artist was a textile artist and was working with all the first graders to create a sensory cart that would go, that has a lot of different items that are tactile and aural and visual, so that you can take it around and to different classrooms, and they're able to use it for students who need it, just to take a break, to experience something a little different, and it was something for the whole community. That was also part of their project of bringing an awareness of special needs to, or differing needs in the classroom to all of the children. This year, we've already started putting the information out to the different schools, and we will soon start the process of teachers talking with artists to get ideas of how they can take their academic goals and use the arts to kind of display them in a way that brings new ideas. And I think that you have another thing to say on this with us?
Well, I'm just gonna close this up.
Oh, oh, okay. So, no, I felt your presence over my shoulder. That's all.
I'm the angel.
I was sitting here feeling, I'm leaving out something important, I can tell. So we will start this process, and then the proposals begin in November, and we make our selections, and then we will be funding four to six grants, depending on the budget for this year. I am gonna say one more thing about the Westchester project that was incredible was the array of academic goals and choosing a movement artist to be able to help the children learn math concepts was really kind of an exciting concept for this whole goal. And so it was fun to watch it come into play.
So, you know, this third grade team, I just have to tell you, they have been some of the most amazing educators I've had a chance to work with. Last year, or the year before, they named our creek. If, I'm sure you've seen all the stuff, it is Wolfpack Creek. And then this year, they built a home, or last year, they built a home for somebody. And it sat on our property long enough that every child in the school was able to interact with it. They understood what it was for. And so I just can't thank these guys enough, not only for being here tonight, to share their passion with you, but also for really affecting our community, both here and in metro Atlanta. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Before we jump into public comment, I do wanna make sure folks know, in case they're here for the discussion on property tax study later on, the senior homestead exemption, that that report was not ready for this meeting. And so we will not be discussing that report until the October 1st meeting. So just wanted to make sure folks know that, since it is near the end of the agenda, I don't want folks to have to sit this whole time.
Before these guys go, I feel like we need to say just how amazing that was. Thank you. I mean, really, it's just exciting. Good work. Thank you.
That naming of Wolfpack Creek, actually, I brought up with the chair of the DeKalb Chamber. You may have seen the note that she's starting an effort to rename Commerce back to Oliver Street. And so I reached out to her to let her know that our elementary students have taken on things like that in the past, and that if she would like a collaborator, that I would put that out there, and they might be able to help her get some influence with people, just because they're so cute and so able to kind of get into places adults can't get, you know. So that was good. So she's very interested.
Awesome.
Okay.
All right, so there's, okay, so we have one group for public comment, which is our Girl Scout troop. Marin Edwards, Asha Masters, and Nola Setzer.
And others, if you're presenting as well.
Good evening. I am Marin Edwards from Girl Scout troop 15226. I'm in eighth grade at Renfro. Our Girl Scout troop is working on our Silver Award project, and we would like to lead composting in our cafeteria. The Silver Award is the highest group award a group can earn. The Renfro cafeteria produces over 40 bags of garbage per day. That's 7,200 bags of garbage in only one school year. This is both a huge cost in bags as well as time for the custodians. During the composting pilot project last spring, the cafeteria reduced that to three to four bags of garbage per day. That's only about 630 bags for the whole school year, again, compared to 7,200 bags of garbage without composting. By composting and recycling in the cafeteria, we can keep approximately 6,570 bags of garbage out of the landfill from only one school. Our Girl Scout troop wants to help make this happen. Asha will tell you some of our plans.
Hi, I'm Asha Master with Girl Scout troop 15226. I'm in seventh grade at Renfro. Our troop would like to make the composting process easier for everyone at Renfro. We have some ideas on how to do that. We think that telling the kids what to do before they get to lunch will make the process easier and not slow the process down at all. We will make a very short training video that will be shown in the morning bow-wow to help the sixth graders who are new to this process learn how to do it. We can also create posters that will be hung up around the school showing students what to do in the composting line. We can recruit parent volunteers when it first starts out, but students can volunteer to help make the process run smoothly during lunch. Since there are six seventh graders in our troop, we can be ambassadors, ambassadors to composting at Renfro, because we will be here next year. And if necessary, we can hold a fundraiser to pay for the composting fees. And we will additionally work with the administration to do other helpful things. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nola Setzer. I'm in seventh grade at Renfro Middle School with Girl Scout troop 15226. We think that having Renfro students as ambassadors will make the whole process run more smoothly. We will be in the cafeteria every day to help sixth graders and eighth graders refresh how, refresh themselves from what we did last year. We can get our friends excited and ask them to help, too. We have six, we have six seventh graders in our troop, so we will be there next year to continue to help. Please let Renfro Middle School compost and help make a positive impact on the environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have one question. Can, can one of you just give us a quick summary of how the composting will work and what happens to the compost?
Yes. So first of all, there, right now, we have just a bunch of trash bins that students go up, just throw their trash in. The custodians have to take the trash. There's already more trash bags in the bin, so they don't have to keep refilling it. But with the composting, there will be a bin that we can put compost in, and also the trays slightly separately. And there's also an option to pour out milk and liquid, other liquids, so it doesn't get in that. Also, so there's like a composting bin, trash bin, and also recycling bin. So as we said before, we would create a video that says what goes in each bin.
Okay, that's great. And great job on such a significant project. It sounds like you have the possibility of making a really big impact.
Thank you.
If you haven't yet met Mrs. Scheck Snyder, can you wave? She was here last month talking about composting as well. And then Mr. Malouf in the back there is our employee at the district level who would oversee getting anything of that in place. So they're both right here, if you wanna snag them before you leave, so, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If the board has any specific questions on the, at Renfro, the SLT, the chairperson for the cafeteria project, I was also involved in the pilot last year at Renfro that ran for about five weeks. So if you do have some questions, some of the information the girls might not have, I'll gladly answer them.
Thank you.
Terrific.
Thank you. That's all we had for public comments.
Okay, so that brings us to our superintendent's comment.
I just wanna say how exciting I am that the electricity came back on, so we don't have to reschedule our meeting. But things are going well this year. We're really off to a good start. Like any school year, there's always challenges as you start up of the school year, but overall, this is one of the smoothest startups we've had since I got here. So I'm very pleased. There's lots of awesome stuff going on in our schools. We are setting up a visit for city commission to come visit Tally Street, because they're very interested, the commissioners are, in seeing the building. We've got the naming of this building and the naming of Tally Street, the like dedication ceremonies coming up. So just lots of really fun things coming on. And then, of course, we have the excitement of new board members coming on. And so it's been nice to start making those connections with Jana and James, to figure out when they can do training, and when they're gonna be coming on board, and things like that. And Jane is here tonight, so thanks for being here. So it's just, it's an interesting, exciting time. There's lots of good things going on, and we're just making some really large strides. So it's very, it's good.
Thank you. So that brings us to the chair's report. I have a couple of items. First, we wanted to say a big thank you to the Decatur Festival Book, Decatur Book Festival authors who came to visit our schools in connection with the book festival. Students in each of our seven elementary schools got the opportunity to have bestselling authors come into the classroom and talk to them and read and interact with them and sign their books. I think it's wonderful, and these are the kinds of connections with our community that I think make Decatur very special. And so a big thank you to all those who made that happen. Also on a book theme, congratulations to DHS library media specialist, Ifeuta Hill. Hope I got the pronunciation correct. Yeah, pretty good. But who was awarded a grant from the American Library Association to start a program called Deeper Than Our Skins. This is a book club that'll teach students to use racial healing circles and literature studies to move beyond the constructs of race, to engage with people on a deeper human level. Wonderful opportunity for DHS students, and we look forward to hearing more about this book club in the future. On to sports. Two DHS cross-country runners were named 5A runners of the week, two weeks in a row at the end of August. Ewen McNally received that distinction for his performance at the Battle of Atlanta, and over Labor Day weekend on Jekyll Island, Christian Gonzalez received the same honor. On top of that, DHS boys took first place over Labor Day weekend. And lastly, DHS senior Jordan Walker was named the number one high school baseball player in the country for the class of 2020 by Perfect Game, an organization that ranks all high school players. That's exciting.
Which unfortunately means we probably lose him on our baseball team. He's a great kid.
Congratulations to Jordan. And that's the chair's report. Did anyone have other comment to make?
I think cross-country, you missed one name, which was of interest. Billy Carlton is the second fastest ninth grader in the state of Georgia.
Wow. No kidding.
Amazing.
Good stuff. Okay, that brings us to our consent items. We have, I think, seven minus two?
Correct.
I'm gonna get them wrong, but we've got the personnel report, the school nutrition report, the financial report. I think we pulled the development report.
Correct.
And we pulled the budget amendment.
Correct.
And so the other item on the consent agenda is transfer of property to CSD, from CSD to DeKalb County for intersection improvements, and the Wilson Center name update.
That's correct.
We have a motion to approve the consent items.
Move to approve the consent items as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the items all pass. So I'll move these other two. Sorry about that. That brings us to informational reports, and the first is on, the first is our equity spotlight.
All right, I think Esther and Wes are going to do that spotlight tonight, correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Duddy, good evening. I am here this evening with our interim Decatur High School principal, Wesley Hatfield, and the Decatur High School media specialist, Ifeuta Hill, whom you might have heard recently, received a grant from the American Libraries Association for a theme curated under Deeper Than Our Skins. I am going to get out of the way briefly in a moment. We want to talk to you about a grassroots initiative from Decatur High School to put devices in our students' hands to reduce some barriers to access. And we'll step you through a little bit here. And I'll start off with how we started, or rather, why we are doing this. Ifeuta will talk about how this began, because really, she deserves a lot of the credit for getting this ball rolling. And then Wes and I will wrap up, talk about how it actually went, and then what our next steps are. So this emerged out of a desire to make technology more accessible to our students. And there were three major things we did at DHS last year. One was to remove some barriers to students who are bringing in their own technology, getting them onto the network. The second is, as we do frequently, adding additional devices, not just to accommodate growth, but to accommodate our teachers' increased desire to have reliable access to modern technology in the room. And then the third thing was to, in some ways, really just catch up with our peer institutions and allow our students to go to a part of the building and say, I have a need, can you fulfill it? And it was Ifeuta who really heard those needs in her media center, and she will talk about that in a moment. I think the connections to equity are fairly clear. One is just increasing access, and technology is one of those tools to provide access to learning. The technology is seldom the result itself or the end itself, but it is a mechanism to help provide and to support students' learning. And part of implementing this, we're also taking a look at our policies and procedures. You know, we didn't want a form, for example, to be an unnecessary friction to getting a piece of equipment to a student who needed it to a complete homework assignment. So that was part of our project, too. And I'm gonna hand it over to Ifeuta.
This project has really been an exciting one, I think, for all of us, because when I first started, one of the things I noticed was that kids would come to us and say, I need, can I please just borrow a computer to take home? And that wasn't something that we offered. And that wasn't something that we offered. Um, and we had a lot of, uh, when I went to teachers and in our um, department meetings when we started to discuss that, there were a lot of different suggestions. I think the thing that I walked away with was one, we, well, our library started opening later, so we had kids that were coming in and they could stay until five to work. But the reality for high school students is you really need more than that. I mean, we can all remember being in high school, you're not finished with homework at 5:00 PM. Um, and now most homework is online and so that homework gap, I mean, there are all these studies about it that that is really can be um, such a deficit, if that, students have that deficit, it does affect their grades. And being able to have access to technology is a game changer for students. And so what we wanted to do was to figure out, well, how can we just put a thing in kids' hand and tell them, just go do what you need to do and bring it back? Um, there had been some programs before that were kind of based on income and things like that. But um, we didn't really wanna do that and so my question to Esten was, how can we do that? How can we make this as simple as a kid checking out a book from the library? Um, so we had a pilot team meeting and list all the people that were there. We kind of threw ideas around and the end result of that was like, let's just do a pilot. Let's just do a pilot and Esten came up with, I guess, the budget to do it and gave us some Chromebooks and we were just gonna try it and see what happened. And the questions, I guess, so what do we do? Do we do um, a survey to see who needs it? I actually had done a survey of all our students when I first started working for DHS my first year. Um, but the question with that is a student might say, yes, I need it, but does a parent really feel that way? And a parent might say, no, I don't need it, but do they really not need it? Or is it just they don't want to have to ask for it? And then how long do we let the kids have it? Do we set a limit of two weeks? Well, what if you have a long-term project? Or what if you're not gonna be able to get a device that entire school year? Um, do we want parents to have to come in? Do we want to make this something where they have to come in and explain to us why they need this, this device? Do we really want them to have to give us their personal information? Probably not. And then with the rental fee, um, that kinda came from, and I can't remember, it was just kind of an opinion of some of our staff, well, if they don't have any skin in the game, if they don't have a financial obligation, will they really take care of this device? But we decided, you know what? No to all of that. We're just gonna put this thing in kids' hands because it's what they need to succeed and that's our job, is to take care of our kids. And so that's what we decided to do. Um, and then the what if a kid loses a computer or a device comes back broken? It's kind of the cost of doing business, you know what I mean? Like giving those kids what they need and that's the attitude we decided to take, you know, and just see what happened with that pilot, so.
Um, so a lot of deliberation on the front end and what's interesting about this pair of questions is, in reality, we were never confronted with them. Our kids were incredibly responsible custodians of the equipment, which frankly should be a surprise to no one. Um, we did have a couple of challenges. Um, one of the, one of the issues that arose was how do we pitch this to staff, right? How do we build staff's not only awareness of this, but buy-in? How do we help them develop the muscle to, if they see a student who has a need, direct them to the learning center? Um, incentivize looking and asking for these opportunities to direct kids to a resource. And there are some things we could've done better um, with that last year. Um, and unfortunately, we, we also ran into a couple of biases that surfaced from um, from our staff. You know, one of the questions up there was what if the kid loses a computer? You might rephrase that as a question that arose of what if a kid loses a computer? And so there was unfortunately some cynicism and some expectations, some unconscious or even just conscious biases about what type of kid might be checking out this equipment. Um, and that was, um, it was disappointing, but also not surprising and an opportunity to, you know, flex some of our courageous conversations muscles about like, let's spotlight and interrogate, where is this question coming from? Um, but I do think that um, better pitching and better conveying the role of this and how this can be a, a, a leverage point for students, um, might've seen some, some higher adoption rates um, when we started off last year. Nevertheless, um, over the course of last year, with initially just twenty devices and we doubled it, I think in the spring, to forty, um, we saw eighty-four checkouts last year. The vast majority of those were extremely long-term, um, until the, the end or near the end of the school year. Um, but we also saw a couple of kids who, their computer was in the shop or they needed it just for that day in class and it was, the kids at least had learned that this was an opportunity for them. One hundred percent of the devices came back returned in excellent condition and I, I think it'd be a hard, a significant challenge to find anything else in the, in the library collection that sees such a high um, response, like such a high rate of return. Like the AP history book return rate was like, what, like sixty percent? A month into this school year, we've seen um, forty-five devices checked out and that's pretty phenomenal. Um, and Wes is gonna talk a little bit about just what is it we're going to do next.
I would also wanna point out that the return rate in excellent condition is probably higher than what we get with staff technology as well. So uh, next steps, our first priority right now is adding to the available checkout pool. We wanna make sure that we have more computers available to fully meet the needs that our students have. So Esten is already working on placing an order to add more computers to this pool. Um, one gap that we also need to um, both surface and close is any access to um, actual connectivity. So we're um, adding some prepaid hotspots so that folks that don't have uh, access to internet at home can have that access so that they, you know, aren't having to take their computer that we're able to provide somewhere else to access the internet. Uh, we are also in the midst, one thing that um, Esten and I and Ms. Hill and Mr. Spruill and a team of teachers have been working on is looking at uh, how we can add just more computers to Decatur High School in general, not necessarily to take home, but just more capacity during the day so that more kids have more opportunities to do authentic um, technology-based work in classrooms. Uh, and the district um, is helping us by increasing our technology budget to be able to get more devices into our classrooms. Um, and then we also, as a part of our ongoing work, um, really wanna make sure that we're continuing to be systematic about asking our families about how they're able to connect at home. There's some work that the district is doing and with the surveys and, and form features of Infinite Campus to be able to collect this data in a systematic way. So, we talked about our three main takeaways from this. The first one obviously is lowering resource barriers. We wanna make sure that kids have what they need to be able to be successful, identifying a gap and closing that gap. And then finally, I think the thing worth highlighting is, this is a need that was brought to um, our, you know, a, a, uh, department at the Wilson Center with a question of, what can we do about this? And within, was it even a month?
It was longer than that.
How, how long was it?
A few months.
A few months. So within a few months, we had a pilot program in place to address that need that really did meet the need. It didn't put up more barriers for kids than it tore down and I think that's a tremendous point of importance in this. Is that Esten, Ifeudah continued to push to say, how can we remove barriers? How can we remove barriers? What are some other ways, other than having a parent come in to sign a form, that we can think of? Of making sure that a parent knows this device is coming home and is okay with this device coming home without the physical process of come into school and sign this, this piece of paper? So just the, the level of um, you know, un, unearthing of all possibilities and brainstorming solutions was really excellent and relatively speedy. So now we'll take your questions. I'll just let Ifeudah do it.
How many devices did you say there were?
We started with twenty and increased that to forty and we're looking at adding another. More. Another more.
What's the estimated need? Like how many? Do you know?
So the answer is actually, we don't know. We know that um, with the number that we have now, we still need more. But because we decided not to make it about income and not to kind of pull parents and students, we're actually not sure.
And I'll add like a, I'll add a compli- complicator and this is a reason for me to add one more detail. Um, you know, there's this notion of induced need too. If you, like if you build a highway, more cars are gonna come drive on it. So by, we're hoping that this actually drives the need, that if we add more, that more students will be interested in saying, oh hey, I can take advantage of this too. By the way, while I'm here, another critical uh, participant in all this is Jason back there. Um, one of the biggest parts of doing this well was to ensure that all the traffic off of the network went through our content filter, that we were compliant with just federal law. He figured it out, so.
So what's your total budget for, for this?
Um, so we've mostly been paying for this through the general fund. Um, one of the transitions that we've adopted is a per pupil allocation based primarily, well, per pupil. Um, with some factors based on what's the gap between how many kids and devices do you have? Um, we invested a few tens of thousands of dollars into this. That's for carts, bags, licenses, the hardware themselves. Um, I, Decatur High School has about at least a hundred thousand dollars for their per pupil allocation for budgeting this year. Um, and a significant portion of that will be going toward additional take-home devices and some others to um, equipment that'll live in the school.
That's great. I'd like to thank you all for recognizing this need. As a parent of two middle schoolers, eve- it's not even new in middle school. It starts even earlier, just, I've realized how much they depend on their device and connectivity to the internet to be able to access their assignments in Google Classroom and to collaborate, e- even sometimes collaborate live with their peers. And it's really mi- very different than when we were all in school. And so it, it, a lot of it, a lot of the learning and studying happens late at night, after the activities are done and the kids are home and have had dinner. So having that flexibility of bringing that device home, I can really appreciate how that could make a big difference to some students.
So you, you raised the observation of, you know, sometimes this work happens late at night, after dinner and after school, wait, after all the other things, come back to work. And so I know one of the things that um, the leadership at DHS is mindful of is if we are, as we continue to provide kids, you know, the resource to take home, a essential corollary with that is communication with families, giving families some resources to set expectations and norms. Technology is a delivery device for a curriculum that needs to include some expectations on teachers too of like, when is it, like, what's the homework load supposed to look like? And just be mindful of the whole kid. So this is, thank you for the thanks, but it is also, we're, we're trying to be mindful too. And one of the reasons that maybe we are a little bit behind some peer institutions um, is we are trying to be deliberate about the whole picture and not just, how many devices are we sending home to kids?
Yeah, there's a lot to think about.
I, I, I really appreciate that last bit that you just added and I think that this is a terrific program. You know, kinda like the last spotlight, you know, I'm excited that this is the kind of thing that, that you guys are, are doing in our schools. I have, whenever we start talking about putting devices in the hands of kids, you know, my hackles go up. You know, I think that, I, I think that it's um, it's, it's very easy to just, you know, put the devices out there and it leads to all kinds of problems and it can be very, very difficult for a lot of families to manage. And um, I actually have much less of an issue with laptops because I think it is more likely to be a, and s- content delivery device or whatever you call it. But the whole BYOB thing about trying to get kids addicted to their telephones while they're inside classroom and that kind of thing, um, I think that we need to put the brakes on, in my opinion. But what I'm so happy about is that you're sensitive to this and that you're clearly thinking about it.
Yeah, and definitely the leadership at both Decatur High School and Renfro are keen, keenly focused on that.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, appreciate it.
You, you mentioned several times about um, our peer institutions. First of all, I, I think it's very healthy, so I appreciate you taking that perspective. Who do you, who do, is that a, is that a generalism? Or you, do you, have you really identified several school systems that you're looking at? Either by watching their mistakes or by following their best practices or what have you?
Yes. Um, I, I have some experience in a couple of other school districts um, that I'd say have um, either been early adopters and in fact are uh, experiencing some of the pushback from their families about very rapidly putting devices in students' hands. Um, this Georgia K-12 community, particularly the CTO community is pretty tight-knit. And so there are emails flying every day amongst my peers, asking questions about, what are you doing here? What are you doing here? Watch out for so-and-so. Um, and we will, we lean on each other for lessons learned. And so we're, yeah, we are keeping an eye on what other large school districts that have like matured into having these big systems and other similar, you know, city-sized school districts that, you know, or maybe are in the same boat as we are, trying to figure it out. Smartest people in the room is the room, right? And that scales up to school districts too, so we're, we're learning together.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I really appreciate you all um, identifying this problem and then not just putting it on the back burner to figure out later, but really putting some energy into it now. And I'm really kind of noticing a theme with, with your presentation, the Girl Scouts and with the highlight spotlight is just the impact because I think realizing that we have children for a finite amount of time and then they have to go on and be productive adults and human beings. And I think that you, that all of these spotlights are showing that we're, that we're showing them a bigger than who they, bigger than who they are. And even something as what might seem minute to somebody who has two or three computers in their home and my wifi bill just comes out of my checking account every month and I don't even think about it. To really kind of hear how you were focused on, that is not how a lot of people live. And so being sensitive to that and realizing when teachers are handing out homework that it's not as easy for every child as it is for our own. So um, I really appreciate the impact that I'm hearing from some of the presentations today. That's really kind of the word that's sticking out for me, so thank you for your time on this, guys.
This gets me excited and I just have to kind of pull it back because, you know, when I roll off the board, give me a call, I'd love to be involved. I, I, I do wanna say thank you for meeting this need. It's been a long outstanding need. We've all known that there, you know, kids can't always get into the library, they can't always get to a printer. A lot of them are writing papers on their phones, if they had phones. You know, some of the, the, I think there's some partner opportunities you could have with Code for Atlanta or Decatur Makers or some organizations that could help you, you know, expand this in a way which is sustainable. I encourage you to explore those. Uh, and I mentioned this at a previous meeting, the E-rate financing in Jason's head may or may not pop up back there. There are some legal questions. Um, I saw you're doing prepaid hotspots. I'm curious what the opportunities are, you're not doing prepaid hotspots.
No, we, we are. I, I'm shaking my head at E-rate eligibility. Um, prepaid hotspots aren't eligible for E-rate funding.
Okay, well, my question was more of the, with the city lane, the fiber and the school's partnership on that, there are some opportunities where if we have excess bandwidth and we have an ability to provide wireless access to that, that bandwidth through things like, um, and I'll be quiet, I won't go too far down the technology rabbit hole, like Fry Funk and the Open Wireless Met, mesh, battle of the mesh people. There's some opportunities where for very low cost, we could provide wireless access or somebody could provide wireless access. But if it's on an E-rate financed network, there are some legal questions as to whether or not we can do that. So that's just some, I'm putting some seeds out there for you to, you're probably already aware of or to explore. And again, definitely when I'm off the board, feel free to, to either keep a big ten-foot pole away from me or to call me and, and invite me and I'd love to be involved with, uh, helping with these type of things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you all. That was very informative.
Okay, our next informational report is on the updated code of conduct and restorative practices.
Good evening, Chairperson Jones, Superintendent Dr. Duddy, board members. I'm pleased to report that we have draft one of our code of conduct up and running for um, the 2019, 2020 school year. Uh, this project started a, a while ago and I'm gonna run you through a little bit of the process, how that went, um, what are the updates, what was guiding our, our work um, for this updated code of conduct? Okay, so four things we're gonna talk about. Um, first of all, why did we need to update our code? Uh, we're gonna talk about some agreements that were developed um, through stakeholder meetings on what needed updated, um, give you a good summary of the updates and then talk about what are our next steps. The next revision is already on my agenda to work forward um, as we plan the 2020, 21 school year. So first of all, the previous code, I don't know how much time you spent reviewing that code, but it was riddled with typos and formatting errors. Um, lines continued and were all meshed together. It was very difficult to make sense and heads of tails of some of the information in there. Um, so that was a number one of the reasons. Um, also, probably most importantly, um, and I'll talk about this a little bit in the next slide, is there was not an alignment with this code of conduct and our equity work. Um, we hadn't yet had the opportunity to really dig in. We hadn't yet had the opportunity to really dig into this code of conduct and, and work through that process and making sure it aligned with our commitment in our equity action plan to incorporate restorative practices in all of our schools. Also, as we look through it, there was a lack of clarity with a lot of the rules that were listed in there. Now, that clarity has not been completely polished out. It's not in the final stage, but it is an improvement as to where we were. Last year, when I was getting calls to talk principals through a discipline situation, I was really having to make some stuff up on the fly is what I felt was best, best practice because there was not a clear outline in the code for where rule levels lay, lied. Also violations were not included and I'll talk about what some of those violations that we were running across as times change. Kids figure out new ways to break rules and that's expected, but we wanted to have a way to make sure we knew how to handle those. And I think most importantly, as I alluded to a little bit earlier, is the work for updating the code of conduct really helped us align our philosophy with student discipline and student behaviors with our equity action plan and the work that we have outlined in that to really take a strong stance on reducing implicit bias in our discipline actions, making sure that we have equitable outcomes for our students. And I think through all the ambiguity that was in there and lack of training, that there was a lot of places where implicit bias could enter into our discipline policies. So hopefully, this is a first step at really working towards creating a more equitable outcome for our students. So then we wanted to talk about agreements on what would guide our updates and what were some of the priorities to help this first draft really get up and going. And I also wanna shout out as we talk about the updates is that fellow cabinet members did a wonderful job proofreading and editing. As you write papers, you realize you kinda get stuck in it and you're reading things that aren't even there because you think it should be there. So, really wanna thank cabinet members for helping review and update the code and catching all of my typos and grammatical errors. But also really, also wanna thank Lily Huddleston. Her and I spent a lot of time meeting with stakeholder groups, including students, staff members, teachers, principal groups. Over the summer, Lily wasn't able to join me, but I did meet with a parent. Actually, she's right there. She came in and also over the summer and helped provide some really great insight on the parent and teacher perspective of the code of conduct. So that was very helpful. Okay, so inclusion of stakeholders was a very important agreement that we wanted to make sure in this first round. We heard from students, we heard from teachers, we heard from principals and parents. So we took a lot of time going around and listening to students. And Lily and I, it was kind of a twofold for us. We were doing some other work as well as really wanting to hear from students. What's their, and what's, what's their take on student discipline? How does it work? What are the ins and outs? What's the things they know about it, things they don't know, how they feel about it? So that was a really great way to help hear what the students felt as the receivers of student discipline. Also spent a great deal of time with some teacher focus groups on how they interpreted the code, what things they wanted to see as we updated the code, as well as with our principal groups and parents. Introduction to the code is, I'm not sure if you read the whole thing, but our introduction really outlines our philosophy with student discipline. And it clearly explains what we believe is the positive approach to discipline that we wanna embrace as a school district. Also aligning it with our restorative practices and making sure that not only are we using restorative practices proactively, but on the reactive side as well, because there's different ways that we can use restorative practices to help our students feel that they are still members of our community because they're not going anywhere. I always tell my, told my teachers when I was a principal, the parents are sending us their best children. They're not keeping the good ones at home. They're sending us the best they have. So we've gotta make sure that we provide the best environment for them. We also wanted to agree that we were not going to just write this code of conduct for students. We wanted to have agreements on what we expected for our administrators, what our expectations were for parents as they engaged with the school, what our expectations were for students. So that was another key agreement on what those would look like. Already mentioned restorative practices. And then we really wanted to clarify what the progressive discipline would look like, not just for administrators, but for teachers and how they can really work forward and use proactive things and interventions in their classroom instead of just being reactive with student discipline. So, I'm gonna run you through a couple of updates and those, if you wanna refer to the handouts in your folder. I just printed off some of the copies from our handbook so that you didn't have to pull it up and we didn't have to go toggle back and forth between a couple of documents. So the first thing you have in there is our stakeholder agreements. And you'll see that we have stakeholder agreements for, actually first I wanted to, sorry, highlight our values. The Decatur creates leaders and that is what we're launching, our Positive Behavior Intervention System under this guise of Decatur Creates Leaders. We had our second full day training today, training the school teams. They're working on developing their expectations. And they are, all the schools are basing all of their ideas and their local school implementation off of this idea that Decatur creates leaders. And also helping us do a little more clarification on, did we hit, did we get this right? Do we need to edit this for the next draft when we come up with that? So then you'll see expectations for faculty and staff partners. And I think the big piece here is helping our staff and all of our administrators know this is how we want to philosophically approach our students to make sure that we have equity and fairness. We also wanted to establish some guidelines for parents to help them engage in this process with us. So a lot of times, parents will feel, oh, I'm, my child is getting disciplined and I either react to it or I don't know what to do about it. So we wanted to give them some, some ideas on how they can help at the school as well as their student. And then we also wanted to give it just as some general expectations for what we expect our students behavior-wise. Okay, the next thing are restorative practices. And that's also just started on the next page in that, in that first couple pages that stapled together. And you'll see that we outlined our belief in restorative practices, the types of restorative practices that we're offering. And we are just working now on getting our staff up and trained on restorative practice. Dr. Huddleston is really taking the lead on that with her assistant, Dr. Bank. So they are really diving ahead and getting lots of people trained on the different types of restorative processes. So the circle process, that is kind, it's more of a proactive process. And then we have collaborative negotiation and formative restorative conferences. And those are things that typically have to, happen after an incident. I was really proud of our new interim principal at the high school because they started the school year. Every classroom was doing circles on the first couple of days of school to help build that community and that was really great to see. Progressive discipline levels is the next big update. So this is, and this took a lot of work from all stakeholder groups. I wanna say this is probably, the table that you see in front of you is probably draft 300. It was a lot of revisions, lots of back and forth discussing because it took a lot of understanding where, and where different stakeholder groups thought that different rules and different behaviors were. And sometimes it wasn't, yes, we're gonna move that. Sometimes it was, here's why this really should be a level two or here's why this really should be a level three. So what you'll notice on the rule violation kind of progressive plan is it defines the level and gives us a very general overview of what that level type of behavior is. And you'll notice on level one, we expect our teachers, level one and level two, I'll say ours, teacher managed behaviors. And we expect our teachers to manage those behaviors if it's a level one, one to three times. And once they get to that third incident, they need to start engaging with their administrator on, hey, what do I do next with this kid? I've tried these things in the handbook, it's not working. I wanna know what do I do next? And that would push a student if they had three level ones up into the level two. And then they really are kinda at the level two until it becomes a very chronic discipline issue, but there's that kind of holding point there as well. So we wanted to outline for teachers what those behaviors were. We wanted to give them interventions to use in their classrooms as well as making sure that we were incorporating restorative circles in there, the restorative process. Also making sure teachers knew where to document their student behavior interactions and then some possible responses. And you'll notice one thing we're, we're trying to get away from too is instead of consequences, using the word responses because we really don't want it to be like, oh, it's a consequence. This is, the behaviors are learned, behaviors are taught. We want teachers to feel like it's more about, if a student doesn't know how to do math, we teach them math. If a student doesn't know how to behave, we've been disciplining. But that's not how we want the mindset to be. We wanna switch it to, if a student doesn't know the expectation, isn't meeting that, we wanna teach that student how they should be behaving, what our expectation is. So the discipline table goes through all the different levels of discipline infractions, gives the teacher and the staff or the staff member action steps. Also administrators have action steps as well. The next big update was, which I think has been very helpful for our administrators, is the rule violation matrix. So in the previous code, after every single rule definition, it would just say rule one, rule two, rule three. But in the matrix, it really gives the administrator a quick glance at, oh, they're gonna, as teacher is having an incident here, they're trying to say that this is an incident I'm gonna handle. No, I'm gonna say this is actually a level two. You need to work, work on this in your classroom. That's a teacher managed classroom behavior. Okay? There were lots of cloudy rules and like I said, there are still some very cloudy rules. This discipline code has over, I think, thirty-six rules. So that's a lot of ambiguity that can enter into that, but we did have to clarify some. So, for example, I'll say rule four is about weapons. There was no four A, four B, four C. It was just you had a violation of a rule four. But there are lots of different types of things kids could bring to school that be, that could be interpreted as a weapon. And specifically, a weapon that is brought to school sometimes by accident mostly are like a pocket knife or something like that. Well, if it's less than two inches, it's not a rule violation that would take a student to a disciplinary hearing. And that wasn't outlined in our code. So we had to make sure that those clarifications were in there. Also, as we did this reviews, once we got the feedback from the stakeholder groups, we did a lot of training. So I trained the principals intensively on the new code. Then we had a group of any staff member at the schools that is working with discipline. They also went through a training and some standard setting. We ran them through some, here's some actual referrals that were written last year. Where do those land now? What would the next steps be? Is this something that an administrator would manage? Is this something that a teacher would now manage? And then the last big update that we added is a bullying harassment form and I gave you a copy there and this is posted on our website. And schools should also have this on their website. One of the, one of the main things that I think our principals were asking for was parents will call or email that we're getting this report of bullying. So we wanted to make sure that we provided a form for when they wanna make, but if a parent or a student or even a staff member has a very strong feeling that a student is getting bullied, that they had an opportunity to fill that out and send that in so that we had some, some tracking on what those, what's being reported. Okay, so our next steps, like I said, that was revision 1.0. Already getting feedback from principals as they call and how does this rule, what do we do here, how that goes. So I'm keeping all those in a, a little journal so that when we come up to the next update, we've got those ready to go. How things work in practice. And like I always said, you could write a really beautiful master schedule for your school and then the kids get in the hallway and you realize they're intersecting during a class change and it's a mess. So sometimes you have to put things into practice to really see how it's gonna work. Also getting back with our focus groups. So the teachers, the administrators, the students that we spoke with, we're gonna circle back with them, probably December, January, and see what were some of the changes that they've seen as their schools have been implementing this new one. And I think the biggest lift will be taking our rules and taking them from thirty-six, hopefully down to ten or thirteen rules and clarifying those much better to align with what the state code is. That's our code. Any questions, comments?
I bet there's a few.
I would just like to start by saying thank you. This is the most substantial revision to the code of conduct I have ever seen. And it's already, you know, heads and tails, whatever the right phrase is, way above where it was before. I really appreciate the work you did to pull truancy and tardies out so that issues which aren't necessarily student issues or may overlap with parents' issues don't end up being things we punish students for. I love the early focus on the values and really emphasizing the restorative practices. I did have a question on one of them, well, actually two. One was rule twenty-two on gambling to see whether or not that was illegal gambling. And then to kind of maybe ask kind of the mixed messages that we send when we have a lottery for parking passes or bingo in the classroom for dum-dums or fundraising with raffles. You know, how does that translate to the legal versus the illegal gambling in there? And the other one which I'll just mention, but I don't expect a response on is that for me, bullying was one of the ambiguous ones because it had so much overlap with the other rules. And I'm sure that that will come into play when you consolidate and move things down. But my overall response was it was an awful lot of work and it was very well done. So thank you.
About the gambling, any gambling, good, any kind of gambling students would do is, is really a rule violation, but
So if money's involved?
It's according to the state.
If somebody says I can jump further than you? I mean, I, I'm just, I, that's where we get into the conversation about the equity work and where does subjectivity come into play? And that's kinda where that, that one kinda jumped out at me is having a lot of subjectivity.
Thank you.
I wanted to say thank you also for all the work that you did. It's wonderful to see the values emphasized in the beginning and all, all of the integration of the restorative practices throughout, even in, even in the table that summarizes the responses and how specifically teachers are going to be empowered to use that. I went ahead and looked back at the old, you know, had a paper copy I hadn't looked at for a long time and just to refresh my memory on what that looked like. And it was really hard to read and really hard to use. And I, I really like the format that this is because like, a lot of times if you're dealing with a situation, you're not going to read something cover to cover. You wanna have a quick reference. You may have read it through and through before, but you wanna really be able to quickly find your situation and then what to do and how to act. So I think this is going to serve much more as a useful document that people will actually reference. So that I thought was also excellent. I liked also that you have five levels as opposed to just three because there's more, there are more nuances in some of these things. And I like that teachers are empowered to handle some of the things, first time offenses of more minor infractions. And then as they become repeat, that, then I, I agree that it's time to engage. And also the more serious infractions, I think it's appropriate for them to be administrative. But it's nice to see them separated so it's clear who is to be the first level of response for, for these things. So thank you for doing that. I did have a lot of little comments that were more, I think, appropriate for the discussions on the second draft. I shared those with Dr. Duty. My overall takeaway is that this is a huge improvement. It's gonna be really useful. And I'm looking forward to hearing what the teacher responses are. And maybe you've already gotten some that you can share because it sounds like you're having training on this now.
Yeah, the, so two types of responses have come in so far. First and foremost, the administrators that have had to use the updated code have said that matrix is so helpful and it's a quick reference. And I gave everyone a, a print, I know, I'm supposed to save trees, but I printed a copy for everyone and they've got emergency numbers here, so it's a quick reference guide. They can flip right to the code that they need or have example forms so that it's really easy for them to access. And they have said it has really been much, much easier for them to quickly identify the code, the rule level and the type of consequence or sorry, response that they would use. And then for teachers, got a lot of good feedback from the teachers that worked on the, and the, kinda helping with the updates and how clear it was and really appreciating that. So, yeah, so far, so good.
Yeah, great work.
I'll, I'll share, repeat the great work and appreciation. I've seen a lot of changes to this repeated, so appreciate the effort involved in trying to, to do what you're doing. One question I had was around in particular, well, how do we ensure all stakeholders have an awareness around this and then ultimately they have a buy-in to it? And, and I, you, you touched on the, the circles at DHS. I guess the one that I really struggle with is, is parents. Can you talk to me a little bit about that? How you ensure that they, they, A, have the awareness and B, have the buy-in?
And that's always, especially when you get to the upper levels, when you're dealing with students. Parents become historically less engaged in, you know, working on that, you know, at that level with schools. I think Decatur High School is an anomaly and is, is engaged. I'm sitting on the SLT this year for Decatur High School, so I'm looking forward to engaging a little bit more. We did, you know, some outreach with our, when we started getting PBIS up and going, talking about in our, we did a town hall asking for people who were interested, if they wanted to participate. I reached out to Beacon Hill Black Alliance, see if they had parents that also wanted to participate. And we had, that's when I got my connection with Janice. So that was great to Um, and we had, that's when I got my connection with Janice, so that was great to get her in there. I'm hoping now with the, um, with the new newsletter from the central office that is going out on a more regular basis, that we'll be able to promote that and engage more parents in these focus groups, um, as we go through that process. So it hasn't been as much as I would want for parents, um, but hoping through some new community output and outreach that we can get more parents involved.
And I, and I, I take your point completely about sort of the high school versus elementary school involvement, but I also think, at the elementary school, there's a dramatic range in parental engagement, expectations, et cetera, that also, I think, needs to be, for this to really work. I just think that that, that third leg of the stool, so to speak.
Yes, definitely.
Uh, one thing I was looking for was, uh, and I saw a little bit about it, sort of between the lines in the dress code, but, um, I recall that we've, we've had challenges with, um, free speech, open discussion, limiting that in there. It appears that this doesn't directly address that, but to me, it feels as if those two issues, they need to coexist, and I don't know how you make sure that what we say in that policy is in alignment with this policy.
We're actually working on a student-free expression administrative regulation right now, um, so that we can address some of those things, and there may be some overlap with Code of Conduct potentially as we get that put in place.
Okay, so as long as it's on the radar, it's good. I did have one other thing. Oh, I, um, I think the, the progressive nature of it is really valuable, so I'll just underscore that. Um, comment that was made earlier. What didn't jump out to me is, you've got a couple of bullets, maybe one, where you call out, "At the middle school only, at the high school only." But the actions seem to me like all the other ones also, again, had this differentiation, what it means. Is, is there coaching that goes along with it? Or how, how does, how does the applicability of a particular action get coached, being different at second grade versus eleventh grade?
Yeah, and that is, a lot of that right now is principal really training their teachers on what they understand. And we talked a lot through that when we did our standard setting with rule violations, and really hearing as the group of administrators and principals and coaches were, and counselors were talking through, "Well, here's what happens with a second grader. Well, this is what we expect with a, with a seventh grader." And that kind of standard setting, I think eventually I would love to have two kind of codes, one that was for K-five and one that was six-twelve. So that is another thing that as we continue to progress this through to even a better document, to look at how we can make those two separate. Cause yeah, what you expect for elementary kids and versus middle and high is, are two different things.
Okay, thanks. Could you talk a little bit more about that, um, standard setting? Because I think that is something that is very unique that we did, which is really important to have this be consistent.
Yeah, so, um, it was actually, I think, one of the most beneficial things that we did, and actually, a couple of the principals took that activity back and did it with their teachers during one of their faculty meetings as well to help train them on Code of Conduct. So I just went through last year's discipline referrals and printed out seven or eight of them. And I knew they were kind of, this year, landing in a gray area for whether it was a one or two or three or five, um, and talked through them. So we, everyone got in groups. They had two or three of the referrals from last year. They had to identify for the code from last year to this year, what's the rule violation, what's the conduct, um, what's the, what's the consequence or the response? What would that be? What could the teacher have done to be more proactive in their classroom? Um, and what feedback would you give to that teacher to help try to make that process a little better? As well as talking a little bit about restorative practices with that, too. It was very helpful.
Thank you. Um, I echo my fellow board members on what a great job, um, and how much work was clearly put into this. I mean, that's very evident. Um, and I, and I also echo Garrett, Garrett, in the tardy and truancy being pulled out of this. Um, that tell you, perception is everything, and a lot of times when you have a kid come in and you just look at his report and his report is this thick, and there's just an assumption made that this is a bad kid until you actually look at it, and most of it was tardy. And so there was already this, um, this narrative that was set for the kid before they even came before us. And so I really appreciate that, that there was some thought put there. Um, and also appreciate how we're continuing to look at all of these different, um, aspects through the lens of equity. Um, and so I just wanted to, I don't want it to be something that we just think is just commonplace and that's just what we do, but I want to recognize, I know that that's intentional. Um, and that when you are getting into these groups and going and talking to stakeholders and sitting down and mashing through everything, that, at, at all times, um, a lens of equity is, um, at the forefront. So I just wanna highlight that and I appreciate your hard work on this.
So I, I also think that this is a terrific work, and it's really, this is a great meeting, uh, for me, because there's so many exciting things that were, you know, and I just love it that, that, that you all are leaning into all of this work and, and really, it's important and, and you're obviously, you know, running at it, so it's terrific. Um, the, the document, um, reflects a huge amount of work and a huge step forward. It generated in me a lot of questions that I wouldn't have had if I didn't have such a good start, right?
Yeah.
So it's a very, it's a very, very good, uh, start. Um, some things that I, I wanted as I read it, um, and, and it might even be that this isn't appropriate for the purpose of the document, but I'll just tell you that as I was reading it, I, I asked myself, "Well, how am I gonna apply, you know, restorative practices?" And so I see a description, um, of different types of restorative practices and different tools, but I don't really understand how it's going to be implemented by a teacher in a classroom. Is there a sequence that I'm supposed to be, to follow?
Um, so what we, and here's what we've, as I walk, walk through kind of a couple situations that have come up at the high school. So they'll call me, um, Wes will call and say, "Hey, we're dealing with this situation." You know, "Here's what the teacher did ahead of time. Here's what we're thinking as a response." Um, and, um, now I've trained myself to always ask, "Where's the restorative part in this? How are you working with the student that was harmed or the teacher and the student that is the perceived aggressor to heal that process?" Because regardless, that student's gonna come back to our school and be a part of our community, so working on that process. And sometimes he's like, and other principals as well say, "They're not ready for that process yet," and then follow up again, and they are, they have been ready and they have had that conversation. Um, and like I mentioned at the beginning, we're still kind of in the infancy stage of implementing restorative practices. We've got a lot of trainings on the calendar coming up that Lily's been coordinating. Um, so I think once we have a better trained staff, we'll really run through that. We've done some of the initial trainings with that. Like I said, the initial circles are out there and they're going. I know, I think the middle school did them as well. Um, we're just really still building that muscle for our staff and for, and the administrators to move forward with that restorative piece. And I was, you know, I was not, I got surprised, not the right word, but just kind of realized how the teachers in our district don't wanna do it wrong and harm anything. So they're very conscientious of wanting to do it right and having the right tools to make it successful.
That makes total sense, and that's, I can't imagine doing it any other way. Um, I guess what I would think would be, would, would seem to me to be a good thing is, as you do it, not to lose sight of the fact that we need to update the handbook to write down, you know, "This is how we do it." So that we can really institutionalize this and not just leave it to the, you know, practices of different schools.
And I don't know if you realize, the title of it now is Code of Conduct and Restorative Practices Handbook, so that we do wanna make sure we are keeping that at the forefront of our code.
I mean, a, a related, you know, similar thing, student, I was very happy to see the student support process and intervention teams. I've always thought that that was, you know, very important. You know, I'd like to see more about, okay, how are we gonna implement that? Was, and, you know, it, it's clear that this is the idea, I would just, you know, a step further that this is how we're gonna do it.
Thank you.
Um, a related, um, well, okay, so that one was kind of the how-to, uh, and, and maybe as, think about it, if, if I am a parent, wondering what this is all about and I read this, am I gonna be able to really understand what they are? I understand it much better after your presentation than I did in, in reading, and I spent quite a bit of time with it. On the clarity front, now, I read the, the code with a lawyer's eyes. And I think there's, there's, I mean, th- th- what you started with was a beast. I mean, I've always, every time I've looked at that, I've said, "I don't even know how." I mean, it's got to be better. But holy smokes, this would take a lot of time. And so what we've done is a vast improvement, but from, it, it still has, has a long way to go.
It really does, yes.
And one of the strong, you know, equity connections that we've all talked about is the need, uh, number one, for the code to be clear. Not only to the students, so they know what they need to do, but to the people, uh, trying to determine, what is it, responses? Um, so that we can apply them equitably and consistently. And any unclarity or lack of clarity in the text or, um, is gonna, is, comes out, right? Um, it's a problem not only in the definition of offenses, um, but, but especially in the levels of offenses. And almost any one of these, you could sit and have a, an argument about what everything means. It's not all academic. Every time we have a discipline hearing, it seems like we wind up asking these selves as a board what these things mean. And so the clarity in the code actually has a pretty direct impact on people's lives.
Yeah.
I was gonna suggest, I think that this is an area where we can get some help.
Mm-hmm.
I know that my firm, uh, has pro bono, uh, programs and, and have str- uh, quite a number of people. I've already talked to the pro bono partner at the firm about getting some help on just this. And so I think that we should, and I'm sure that we could enlist lawyers from a number of firms in, in town. And this is kind of made for that kind of a legal review, so we can get some lawyers to actually write codes that, that make sense.
Yeah.
So I, so I'll, I'll talk to you further about that.
Okay, I'd be great.
Um, the other question, kind of along the same lines, is how much we have, uh, thought about within this? The, the, the one that caught my eye when I first read it was the alcohol offense. And the, the penalty for alcohol, uh, I don't remember the, the level, but it's basically a ten-day suspension for using alcohol or, or being impaired by alcohol. And, um, you know, that's an example, the same would apply to drugs. I mean, okay, so I've got a kid, he's struggling, y- y- you know, he, he gets involved in drugs or alcohol, and so I kick him out of school for ten days and just make sure that he's gonna have a super hard time ever coming back, right? And so, yeah, I wondered if we've, does this review reflect our thinking on the appropriate severity of those types of infractions?
I didn't really spend too much time realigning some of those things, um, because I think that is a big realignment to past practice.
It's not a giant.
Yeah, so that is, as we go through the next revision, really looking at how does that align? Is that pr- that previous thing really gonna shift culture? Um, so really taking some time to look and study at that. And as I talk with administrators, we're, through the first draft changes, there was a lot of like, "Wait, what? We, teachers handle this?" And it was just a lot of retraining. So I can imagine even some of the more significant rules were like, "Wait, why would we change that?" So I agree that there is a lot of, particularly with some of the situations that are kids that have experienced trauma and high, you know, some high incidents at their homes, that they have some other outlets that they may use. And that's just something that we wanna work to support them, particularly through our student center.
Right. I, I think we should take a, a, a real, and I, I understand, it's a, it's another big question, but I think we need to look at it. And the final thing is the question of suspensions. We've talked about this all around, but we really, I think, need to have a, a policy, and somehow we need to state it, that we're gonna just try not to do it. Um, and that we're gonna come up with, I think in Fulton County, they've got an in-school kind of a thing. So instead of a, instead of an out-of-school suspension, if a kid needs to be taken out of the classroom, there's gonna be a program within the Fulton County schools. Kid still comes to school, he still gets his courses. And he gets some extra help on whatever the issues are, but he's not kicked out of school. Um, and it seems like that should be our goal, is zero suspensions. And if we're gonna have suspensions, they should be only for things that we just can't function as a school system if this kid is still here.
I do think it'd be great to, I do think it's helpful to remove the kid from the school environment because being at the school is very important to most kids and being amongst their peers. And so, um, I have seen those programs be very successful where you like go to the district office for the day or something. So you are, there is a consequence to what you're doing, but, um, it kind of, um, brings it home that, hey, this is pretty serious. Um, I do think the one challenge we'll face is that these are not that frequent, and so actually having that in place may be a challenge for a district our size, but I think it's worth looking into for sure.
I, I understand the challenge.
And I always do try to encourage that they use our in-school suspension options, particularly at the high school and middle school, before they suspend, and that's that progressive nature of the code. As I, when you look between level three and four, your option's pretty wide, but when you're calling me to get that approval, why is out-of-school the necessary option instead of in-school?
Right.
Garrett? Two things that I thought of while we were going around. Um, one was our, our hearing officer is going to be trained in restorative practices so that we, they don't just jump to, you know, how much of a suspension, how long, how much alternative school.
Yeah.
Um, and the second was kind of a response to the, the legal review. And I'm, I think when we sat in on hearings, we've kind of spliced semantic hairs trying to read these things. Um, and while, while I appreciate the legal review, and I think it would be very valuable, I think it's gonna have to be a very special breed of lawyer who can communicate to non-lawyers, uh, specifically to the parents, the teachers, the staff, uh, sorry, the students and the administrators. As long as we can keep it so that the legalese is clear, but readable to people who are not traditionally, you know, practiced in reading legalese, that would to me be the, the needle to thread there.
That is what good lawyers do, but, uh, it's, but, but I, I understand that not all lawyers are good lawyers. But, but I, but I, um, I, I, I was thinking about that as well, is it'd be easy to take this and just completely screw it up. But I think that we could probably, um,
Thread that needle.
steer it in the right direction.
Uh, but I did wanna address your question about, um, hearing officers trained in restorative practices. Um, Lily and I have met with an individual who, we are looking at contracting him to hold formal restorative proc- prac- um, circles. Um, so instead of the hearing off, we wanted to try to intervene with a restorative process before we get to the hearing. So our, our, what we're hoping to do is if a kid gets to a point where we're, are looking at taking them to a hearing, in between, when there's that period of a suspension, that we would hold a formal restorative conference where the school representatives can come together, the student, the parents, people affected, and see if we can come to an agreement so that we can cancel the hearing and not have to do a hearing at all. So that's kind of our plan with that. Um, so hopefully, we won't have more hearings coming up. We'll have less. Um, and then, this, I think that was it, yeah.
Just only because I, I think that there's so much that needs to be rationalized in this. I, I just really under, wanna underscore that, be, and not critiquing at all, it's just recognizing the, the enormity of the challenge. Because the alcohol one is one that has always grabbed me, and, um, and then the marijuana one in, in the drug use one. And, uh, I guess, two comments, not gonna even begin to try to solve it here, but I do recognize that in what's written here right now, there is that encouragement to move away from an out-of-school suspension and move into, if agreed, forty-five day, you know,
Yep.
window, all that. So I, I, I do think that some of those elements exist and that's really important. And as you take on the extraordinary challenge of rationalizing all of this, um, I think that this takes on a really large community conversation because I think so much of this is reflective of legal issues, but also community values and, and it's, 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 so it's just a really big piece of, of the overall conversation, um, in addition to the equity aspects.
As we, as we're moving towards PBIS, restorative practices, social, emotional learning, all of these things are conversations we have to have with the buy-in of the, the parents and the staff and the staff.
Oh, this is a very small thing. We, we need to be careful on the hand, I'll talk to you later about it.
I saw a sign today that I think gets to Mark's point perfectly of like, the challenges of, of things with, um, the Decatur community specifically, in front of a well-known candy store is a sign, um, right now that says, "Candy, ice cream, toys, beer." Right? And I think that is a challenge that our kids faced, are, are mixed messages about a lot of things. And so being cognizant of that, um, and what it means when you have kids who go to homes and are drinking with adults, um, and things like that happening. And it's something the Decatur Parent Network, I know, thinks a lot about. And, um, we had a presentation recently about, um, kind of handling those, and even just how, um, the research says things like, um, if parents think that other parents let kids drink at their house, they're more likely to let kids drink at their house, even if it's not true that they're letting more kids drink at, at the other houses. Just the thought that other parents are allowing it is enough to convince parents to do it. So things like that, I think, definitely intersect with- So things like that, I think, definitely intersect with the work that we're trying to do here, just because it's part of the culture of what we're dealing with, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Maggie.
Okay, onto our action items. The first is the update to the board policy manual.
So this, the last time we passed the manual was quite a while ago, in like March, maybe. It was version one-three-two. In case you're wondering how we jumped from one-three-two to one-three-four-point-three, that's 'cause as I have time to work on it, I number it, so I can keep track of where we are. So you haven't necessarily seen those interim steps, but you see the outcome of it there. The red line document goes from the original version that was passed, one-three-two, to this version of the manual. It has a couple of things in there where I updated and clarified those legal and policy type references to put it more in the format we were trying to do. We have a statement, you may recall at that same meeting, I think, we brought up some examples like, where in our policy manual does it say that we have an early childhood program? And nowhere did it say that. And so you'll see that sentence added there just as an example of things that as we catch them, we fix them. We had talked about some vendor relations document, or documentation which we added in there. I had noticed when we were processing that donation at the last meeting, that our donation policy actually didn't accommodate cash or other funds. It was all about services and things. So I added in cash or other funds, 'cause I think that was the intent of what the policy was. And then I just went through and reformatted a lot of things to make sure it was consistent throughout the whole document. So those are the changes from the previously passed version to this version.
I just have one comment on AR two-point-six-two recruiting. And there, the red line is adding the nondiscrimination categories for recruiting and specifying four of them. And I think that we were gonna check to see if these were because those were the ones required by law for recruiting. But I wanted to suggest that we consider, as opposed to calling out the minimal, or the minimum required nondiscrimination characteristics that are required by law, that we perhaps refer back to our own definition of discrimination that we already have in this policy manual in policy two-point-four, where we are even more thorough and more detailed and include more subgroups.
Classes, yeah.
Right. Because maybe, that would maybe be that because as a district, we go above and beyond what's required by law in protecting different subgroups and classes.
I think it's a great point. I think that's one of the pieces of language that the attorney added in, and probably wasn't even thinking about the fact that our actual nondiscrimination policy includes other classes that aren't part of the Georgia code necessarily. So I definitely think we could incorporate that, and I like the idea of referring to like the one list of, in everything, wherever we feel the need in a policy to say we don't discriminate, we have one list that it's always referring back to. We can definitely do that. Maybe we could, and just so we get the policy in place, maybe we could approve it as is, and then I could bring a revision at the next meeting if that would meet the board's needs.
Well, I appreciate the continued effort to clean this up and get it right.
And just to give you an update, we're also working on a system. I've started creating an index that we can use for indexing administrative regulations to make it much easier as we add regulations. Where do we put them? How do we manage them? As you know, a lot of regulations come out of the policy manual, so it's natural how to number them. But there's other regulations that we put in place that aren't coming from the policy manual. And so I have a new system set up. We're trying to find some tools to help us manage it before we implement it. But at some point in the future, you will see us start to renumber all of our administrative regulations so that we can have a consistent system throughout, so that will be coming.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the manual?
Move to approve board policy manual version one dot three dot four dot three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. And our next, oh, we need to, let's go back and pick up our.
We have the board training plan.
I was just, I didn't wanna forget this.
I won't forget, I've got it right here. The budget amendment one.
The ones we pulled.
Yeah, I've got it on the list here.
Okay, so our board training plan.
So the board training plan is just what we discussed at the last meeting. I did not include the trainings. We had talked about, could we get credit for some of the training through Pacific Education Group? We didn't actually need those hours. We'll get them just by doing this, and so I did not include those in the training plan. It does not mean we're not gonna do those. We just didn't have to figure out how to get state credit for those. Does that make sense? So we will get the hours that we need through these trainings right there. I've reached out to our, the two folks running for new board seats to see if they could come to November or February. I believe Jane is gonna come in November, and I think James couldn't, so he's gonna come in February. So that will take care of those nine hours of training. And like before, I will plan to attend with them, 'cause that's a super valuable experience for us. And we'll have the whole board training, and then we'll have the other training during retreats. So very similar to what we've done in the past, and we can get that submitted if that looks okay to all of you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the board training plan?
Motion to approve the board training plan?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Academic calendars, as you know, we did another survey. The results were very robust again. We had six-hundred-and-seventy-three responses. There's a link there where you can view all of the results. In, in short, one of the big things was there was tremendous support for changing the last day of this school year, twenty nineteen twenty. From June second to May twenty-ninth, you may recall that we've had lots of discussions about, do we really need to continue doing the hundred-and-eighty-two days, hundred-and-eighty-three days? It's pretty clear the will of the community is no, let's not continue. So that's why it was suggested at the last meeting that we survey and just see, would you even wanna change this year? Sixty percent of respondents chose extremely desirable, and among teachers, eighty percent chose extremely desirable. And only four percent chose not at all desirable, so you'll see the recommendation to move the last day. And then that will also bump up the, two teacher post-planning days will bump up accordingly. The fall break, there were a lot of preferences, but the one that won out there was, the one that lost out was the way it was in the first draft of scheduling it during Labor Day, so you'll be glad to hear that, Louis. They hated that idea. They were on the same page as you. The two weeks after Labor Day was the most popular option, three weeks was the second most popular option. So in the ones that are presented here, you'll see it's two weeks after Labor Day. We, not that we need to decide tonight, but we did survey about the obstacles that families may have if we build in some things like half-days or early releases in order to find some of this professional learning time during the school year. Maybe for parent-teacher conferences also, or other work time. And as you can see, actually sixty percent of respondents had no significant obstacles. That really surprised me. And then a lot of them that did have obstacles, it was things about, not surprisingly, finding childcare, having to take time off of work, things like that. Thirty-eight percent of folks fully supported implementing the idea, and thirty-one percent were tentative, depending on the final choices we make. And so that, to me, seems like a good sign that we should continue engaging with the community to figure out a little bit more detailed and continue with that process for, potentially for the next school year. And then the input about the two teacher workdays during the school year, the day after spring break, which was in the first draft, was the least popular option. The most popular options were mid-October and the day after holiday break. And so you will see, what I did is I tried to split the October date between fall break and Thanksgiving break, to put it right in the middle, or pretty close to it. And then the other one, we already had, the day after holiday break. One thing that came up quite a bit in the comments, and I've also heard from teachers, is a desire to look at that. If we are going with that October date, to consider taking into account where Halloween falls. It's not a big deal next year, 'cause Halloween's on a Saturday, and so the kids have Sunday to recover, and then Monday they're back at school. But the following year, actually Halloween is on a Sunday. And a lot of the comments said, so don't schedule the workday on the Monday before Halloween, schedule it on the day after Halloween. And that way, since Halloween is a pretty big event here in Decatur, the kids can still be out late and not come to school. Sugar crashes after having not enough sleep, and they may have more productive time. So that's something we may wanna consider. It doesn't impact next year's calendar, but perhaps as we plan out the final calendar for the final year, when we're at this point next year, we may wanna consider moving that date by one week, so.
And I, I think that is something to consider. I think, I'd like to suggest that we put that out for the teachers to decide, because it's their workday. So if they wanna have a three-day weekend on October, you know, twenty-sixth, or the Monday, whenever, that's fine. If they wanna do it, you know, if they prefer having a three-day weekend, well, not a three-day weekend, but it on a Monday, so that's a three-day weekend for the community. That would be, I would go along with the teacher preference. If the teachers preferred to make it the day after Halloween because they want to avoid having tired, sugared-up kids in school that day, I would support that too. It, just to keep in mind, though, that that might mean the subsequent year that we'll have a Tuesday off, and then a Wednesday off, and then a Thursday off. So that would be just something for the community to also be aware of. We have had Tuesdays off every year up until now because of Election Day. So that's not some, you know, that's, that's happened before, and it's, it's just, but I think I would be happy to put it out there as a teacher preference and let them decide when they want it to be. My, my only outstanding concern here with this calendar, and I'd just like to talk through it, is because we no longer have the makeup days that were the October Columbus Day and were also on Election Day and the March workday. And the end of the year, we're back to hoping that we don't have, you know, I guess a significant, whatever that number is, number of school days off. So just, I wanna make sure we've thought through that, because we have condensed this school calendar year, and it's, it looks great to me. It takes into, I mean, the thoroughness of the analysis and also the survey was fantastic. I think you did a great job of explaining all the nuances and all of the many, many things that you have to take into consideration when you put together a calendar. But what would we, you know, what would we consider to be a point at which we might need to implement some sort of makeup days? And if so, what would that look like with this sort of calendar strategy that we have here? That's really the only outstanding problem. And I know that we've talked about that in the past, and our tendency has been to say that we're not making widgets, and we, the teachers can flex and still get the necessary learning in. If we do miss a few days due to inclement weather, and it shouldn't have a significant impact on the learning throughout the year, but at what point do we feel like it would? And if so, what would our options be?
I think it's a great question. Before we get into it too deep, just a reminder that the state does build in an assumption that, do you guys remember, is it three days or five days? Four days. Oh, see, I was right in between. Four days that are, for, now, the hundred-and-eighty days does not actually apply to us as a charter district, although it would in terms of the pay we get for the teachers, we believe. But the, if you, you can use up to four days for like inclement weather, natural disasters, or, you know, power outages, or whatever, or more likely water outages for us, and not have to make those up under the standard calendar. So the state has set that threshold at four, right? Of, once you get to four, then they want to look at, how are we gonna make those up or not make them up, just as a point of reference. And there are other school districts. Cobb County is the one I mentioned before, that they actually are only scheduling, I think it's a hundred-and-seventy-seven days. They're automatically taking several of those built-in makeup days. And then they do not plan to change their calendars, my understanding. They will do those home learning days where they feel they can deliver the instruction virtually. I will tell you, I've talked to quite a few teachers who do that, and the, the term that came up to me is, it's a joke, and that it's not really effective, and it's really just going through the motions of counting a school day. So I would be a little concerned about that kind of approach unless we could do it with fidelity, but that's another option that some school districts do. They try to figure out how to deliver things a different way.
And one year we did do the extended days, and I know that last time we didn't opt to do that again. But, and I guess it's pretty rare that we have more than four days missed per year, but we did, we did face that a couple of years ago.
Correct.
So.
Well, and perhaps what we should do is set a threshold of, when we hit this many of days, we need to start discussing what we're gonna do to make up.
Yeah.
Right? Are we gonna add time? Are we going to extend the school year, whatever? Because part of the hope is that that is an aberration, that you are gonna miss more than that. So I would be comfortable with that as well, if we wanted to approach it that way.
Yeah, just wanna at least think through it and have a plan that hopefully we won't need to execute, but have already thought through it so that we're not having the same conversation again mid-year.
Yeah.
Because we won't know if this is a problem likely until January or February, and then our options are fewer and further between, so. Okay.
That's a great point.
I appreciate that we're still working on this, and it keeps getting better.
Yeah.
With, you know, my, my December date coming up, I'm thinking, and Mark sitting across from me there, these conversations have been had many times over many years, and one thing that happens is board members roll off, and then you start having the same conversations over again. And so my question for you is, how do we capture this type of institutional knowledge so that the next time that we propose adding two days, or subtracting two days, or building in two days, that the history is recorded so that we can, you know, not reinvent the wheels over and over?
I, I think you keep your superintendent in. Unlike our neighboring school districts. And I will carry that torch.
The only thing I wanted to say is I think that everybody should take note that, I mean, it really was a phenomenal process. But the thing that I appreciate most about the way, about your approach to these things is going out and doing the survey and listening, you know? And so, and really, anyone like me who looked at the last would have just been aghast that we were gonna lose that, that, that fall break, 'cause it was on every single one of your calendars. And you hear the comments all the time from people who say, this is obviously what they wanna do, and this is the way it's gonna happen. And I'm gonna fire off an angry email because I'm so upset at the way they're trying to cook the books or whatever. But that's not what happened. And I think that, you know, people just need to realize that when we ask these questions and say, give us your feedback, it, you know, we listen. You listen.
That's a great point.
And, you know, every time, you know, I try to accumulate these examples. Say, no, that's not right. The reason the question's being asked is 'cause we wanna know the answer. But so I appreciate your approach to this and all the work that you put in it.
Thanks.
Are we ready for a vote? Or do we need a vote? This is an action.
We do need a vote, yep.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the changes to this year's school calendar and the subsequent two years' calendars as listed in the agenda.
Is it subsequent one year?
Two years.
Actually, both, I put both years there.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye. I wonder, is anyone interested in like a five-minute break? I'm just about to, I just need. All right, so we'll take a five-minute break.
Getting there. Louis, it's only eight-twenty.
I know, I don't know why I'm so tired.
Is that a five-minute nap?
Oh, I see.
And, and I can even say, okay, well then just, you just give me a new password.
I wish I knew what he looked like. I didn't notice.
Logan, I'm covering the meeting tonight for Decaturish.
So where I get stuck. Is. So there it is. And that was of course my desperation.
I'm catching up also this.
Okay, then the last meeting, there was a resolution just to. Dissolve the committee that never actually existed.
Right.
There had been a resolution to create one, but we found that that was not the best first approach because there was just so much information to digest, so much. And that we didn't really have access to. And so we decided as a board. That the best first step was to engage an expert who really deals with these issues. On a regular basis and can give us an analysis and a starting point for our discussion. So that's the report that we're waiting on. And we were hoping to have a draft of that tonight, but we didn't get that yet. We'll probably do it next meeting.
Okay, and the next meeting is October one?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the first Thursday.
So next.
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't even know a day.
That's okay. Yeah, well, next, next month, we ended up removing it because. Have a conference the second week, but it's typically the second week, but it's not always. Sometimes there's spring break or, you know, after holiday breaks. We change it, but we typically should. But you might want to, if someone's planning to come regularly, just put that in your, in your monthly repeat.
Of course.
Because they change sometimes depending on whether we're on break or not, or if we have conferences, sometimes if the whole board is gone, we can't have it.
Hey, David Diddy.
I won't put you on that.
Yeah. Thanks.
I do know the ABS, school district. We'll just keep that among friends.
Awesome.
Thank you so much. That really clarifies. And then I will just let Dan, who's the editor of Decaturish, know that October one is going to be the discussion for that.
Yeah, that's when we're hoping to have that report back.
We should have the report by that meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
I know they're eager to cover that.
What's that?
They're eager to cover that. A lot of eager readers.
And I'm thinking if that may be one, that we just sit down and have a time.
Yeah, have Courtney a chance to digest it first.
Right, yeah.
How to distill that the best possible clarity for community.
When I send him this, he'll back, so I can't have this.
Yeah, yeah. So what did you, I saw your comments. I'm trying to remember, what, when did you find out about the scenario that I was running? Was I? Where I plugged in, maybe you saw my question, I plugged in one of the existing tax exemptions. And there was still, like I was expecting it to show zero.
Right. I mean, I just mentioned that that's what we were expecting.
Okay.
We were expecting to see the incremental cost, not the total cost.
Yeah.
So if there's a way to somehow represent that.
Yeah, didn't, isn't that what you were expecting too?
Well, we mentioned that and that was one of the points that we made at the last meeting. We weren't talking about. The total, we wanted to know the difference between the senior homeside exemption and what existed.
And I thought that's what they gave us. I think that's, I thought that's what they.
But not on the tool.
Oh, really?
Correct, not on the tool.
I, cause I went back and reread the Tableau Tool section and I thought that they were thinking that they were giving that to us, which is why I was concerned.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe they are, yeah.
Cause.
If you did, if you did put in the val- the variables that matched the, um. What was put in was not the recommendations or the, the two recommendation scenarios, it then came out really close to one point two.
Right, right, exactly. But if I put in the existing exemption, it still gave a value of about half that, which it shouldn't have because if, if the subseted. And then all went away.
Right.
Then that different.
Well, maybe that would be, um, you know, how if the existing exemption, like there's all the counties that all have different kind of caps. If the existing exemption is twenty thousand. Maybe it's adding another twenty thousand.
We'll see what they say.
Add it in.
It's your, um.
Oh.
Twenty hours?
Okay.
And I need to turn it into the statement.
You could configure the, configure the Tableau Tool in a way that it is more restrictive when you roll back, roll back a bunch. You know what I'm saying? You could say that we're just going to have a ten thousand dollar income limit across the board and you're going to have to be easy. And so that actually, if it was only the increment, should be a negative number. Not a positive number because we could actually put a policy in place that's more restrictive. Than what the, the three is, the four is or who knows.
There's no way to do it based on wealth instead of income, is there?
And even what it says, an income is a flexible.
I remember talking to you about that just to see, like, they always use income because you can actually ask for a tax return. And look at some of these adjusting rows income.
It's what I always feel bad about when you look at college applications because people who manage their finances well, basically penalized. And people who blow every last penny of their, get rewarded.
Yeah.
I think I, I may have told you about my friend in college, her junior year, and it was, she got twenty five thousand dollars over there. And had to turn it all over to Cornell College because now she lost all of her life.
Yeah, well, basically what happened to me at Northwestern, they had no academic scholarships at the time and for every scholarship you got, they reduced your financial aid.
Yes, exactly.
So I got some scholarships, but it just reduced my financial aid. So I basically gave all that money to Northwestern.
Exactly.
The flip side of that is that, that I had my first twins when I, in my third year at, at law school. And so I was totally free and not only because I had a lot of need. And so they gave me all, I had free tuition and they even provided support for room and board.
Wow, that's amazing. Yeah?
It's a great service.
That was good.
Although at home, it probably wasn't so good. Law school and twins.
Right.
Well, it's high school. Do all those things before your kids get to high school. Cause if you wait till the junior or senior year, it's too late.
Yes.
Wait, say it again.
You gotta do all those, you gotta overextend yourself and do all those projects you were thinking of doing before your kid hits high school.
Right, get rid of that, burn it out.
Yep.
Alright, shall we?
Hit the podcast.
Wrap this up?
Okay. We'll, uh. Call the meeting back to work. Yeah, let's see.
Alright, we are at the Framework for the Facilities Planning Stakeholder Engagement.
Actually, the budget amendment for additional.
Oh, no, thank you. Budget amendment for additional staff. So this is the item we pulled from the consent agenda. Um, and the, just a quick overview, um, as are mentioned in, in the, uh, description in more detail, but. Um, we had more students show up to Westchester than anticipated, enough so that we needed to add an entire kindergarten class at Westchester. Um, it's the first time in, since they've opened that Westchester has had four kindergarten classes. So we added a teacher. We also added a para pro because the other kindergarten classes have a para pro. And we added thirty six hundred dollars for classroom supplies, which is our typical practice when you open an elementary classroom because they need to buy stuff. Um, and then along with the increase in students at Westchester, there was also a, a, a significant increased need for. Early intervention program services and so we did have to add an EIP teacher. Um, we also had two staff, um, one at Fave, one at Claremont for special education. We had quite a few students, um, show up. That had needs beyond what we could serve with the existing planned special education staff. So those five staff members have already been added. Um, we had to add them right away and get them in, in place in order to not. Um, disrupt the classrooms once the school year started. Um, the, in addition to that, um, we're also requesting an adjustment to add a district wide behavior specialist. And a person to work with them, which we're, now we're calling a behavior para pro, um, but it, it, that may change the exact title of it. But basically the idea being we have some very serious student behaviors, um, that we often have to go to some experts to help. Figure out how do you manage these behaviors effectively? Um, and we do have consultants and things we can turn to. Um, but between that and our implementation of MTSS, the multi-tiered system of supports. We really feel like we're to the point, we need an internal person who can learn the culture of Decatur. Um, who can learn how we're doing things with PBIS and be in a, an integral part of rolling out PBIS. Um, and just have that real expertise on, um, behavior management. And so we're requesting additional funds so we can add, um, that behavior specialist. And then because we want the behavior specialist to be able to, um, address a lot of needs. Um, but sometimes you need some assistance implementing those, um, behavior modifications and those, um, programs for trying to modify behavior. We also want to add a para pro who would work for the behavior specialist. So for instance, if the behavior specialist comes into a kindergarten classroom to, to address the behavior of two or three kids there. Comes up with a lot of strategies of here's what you should try. That para pro could stay behind potentially for the next week or two and help the teacher implement those and, and kind of have more of a transition period to help ensure success. Um, so that, um, the behavior specialist can go on to the next need while the para pro is kind of helping implement that need. That's our vision of what that looks like. Um, we haven't figured out exactly what that would be. Um, and we're not exactly sure it will even be considered a para pro, but, um, we're throwing that out there as the terminology for now. So that's the vision of what we're trying to do. Um, and I'm, I'm pretty excited if we have your support to do that. I think there's just. Each year we see more and more, um, serious behaviors that we really need to be able to help our staff address effectively. And you know, we try to keep our kids in that general education classroom as much as possible. Um, some of these do qualify for IEPs and of course there's extra services when you do that. Um, some of them don't necessarily qualify for an IEP, but it's still incredibly challenging for a classroom teacher to manage without having some resources of. How do you actually take, take, um, uh, address these behaviors in this child? Um, the nice thing also with behavior specialists is they are very much solution focused, much like you heard Maggie talking about to- tonight. Um, about how do you respond? It's not about punishing a kid. It's about the kid comes to you as they are. How do you respond? Why is that kid doing that? Is the kid doing that because he wants an adult to react? Or is a kid doing that because he needs an adult to react, right? Like you might have two very different reactions, um, to what a kid's doing. Some kids, you need to ignore when they're doing that behavior. Other kids, they just need, they're showing you they needed an interaction with someone, right? And so the behavior specialist can really come in and help figure that kind of thing out. So that's the gist of what we're requesting there. Any questions I can address?
Just one, um, about, like, how, how will the time that the behavior specialist and the. Behavior, um, paraprofessionals, how will their time be allocated between the schools?
I think it really will depend on need. Like for instance, one elementary right now, we have incredibly high need. And if we had that person on staff, they'd probably spend the vast majority of their time at that one elementary school. Cause that's where the hotspot is right now. So it won't necessarily be like a allocation or something like that. It really will be responding to where the needs, needs are. This person will work for Dr. Huddleston and so she'll help manage where they, they get placed and when and, and how do schools even ask for that, right? Like how do they connect with this and get that support and what's it look like? That is all still to be figured out.
Okay, but that person will be at the schools, like physically.
They will be out in schools very frequently. A lot like, I would say, I, I envision it being a lot like, um, our school psychologists.
Yeah.
That spend the vast majority of their time in the schools, but they also have time here too, right? When they're processing, when they're researching something or whatever. So I would think this would be handled somewhat similar to that.
Okay.
And, uh, my question was less about the behavior specialist and more about the, uh, behavior para pro. Uh, and more about how that person's taken care of. Because it, it sounds like we've never done this before where we've had a para pro who's itinerant. Um, and I, my concern goes towards how, how well prepared we are as a school system to make sure that that individual is successful in that role.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. And actually, as we're writing these job descriptions i- in preparation for this. That's part of the discussion is like, what expertise do we expect that person to have coming in? What are things that we can train them on, right? Once they get here. Um, but yeah, it could be a difficult position and so we're giving a lot of thought into exactly. Who it is you get in that position and how you support them. Cause it, it is not like a typical, um, para pro position in that you're floating around. You don't have the stability of being in the same classroom all the time, et cetera. It definitely is different, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I have to say, one of my unvoiced concerns when we were going through the budget process and looking at where we were going. Um, with some of our behavioral, social, emotional learning stuff was, uh, the line items there were to me a little soft. And so I, I'm actually glad to see that I think that this is a needed thing and it will add the resources we need to move. Forward faster with many of the initiatives that we're doing, even though I know that the, uh, initial thing is that we have some particular hotspots that need to be addressed. Um, but it's, it's, it's a good thing. Um, trying to see if I had any other questions. Are there any other, given the context of the beginning of the school year? You know, the best laid plans, uh, rarely you survive meeting reality. And so reality is here. Are there any other, um, you know, foreseeable, sizable budget amendments, uh, around the corner?
Nothing I can think of. We have a couple of situations where we may have to, um, bring in some staff because of some long-term leaves and stuff. And we might have some overlaps in staff. Uh, most likely those can be handled within the existing budget. Um, there's a possibility, um, once we get our audit back, we may be figuring out what are we going to do with any leftover funds from the previous budget year? So that would be a budget amendment, um, but not for increased expenditure necessarily, more for allocation of what to do with that. So. Um, I can't think of any major adjustments that we can foresee coming forward. If anything, it would be things like if we decided to engage with a consultant about something and decided, hey. This isn't something we had planned to do, but now we want to do it in order to keep moving faster. Maybe we would engage with a consultant and have a engagement. But nothing to the tune of what this one is. This is probably the largest one we'll see all year.
Do we have a motion?
Uh, move approval of the amendment for the fiscal year twenty twenty general fund budget by five hundred thirty one thousand, three hundred and fifty six dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
And then the other one is really a discussion item, so I just moved it to the end of the discussion items. So can we move on with the framework for facilities stakeholder planning?
Yep.
So Noel is going to, uh, go over this framework for you real quick here.
Dr. Diddy, board members, it's a pleasure to be back up here in front of you talking about something besides Tally Street and talking about our future, um, plans. I have put together a framework, a draft framework for you of some ideas, uh. Towards the community interaction that we want to, um, put in place along with, uh, an outline of the process for working on the long range facilities plan. Um, what you'll see, uh, that's probably easier to see in your board packets or the download is the, uh, little timeline that I've put together. There we go. Little timeline that we've put together there that, that really starts this month. And what we're trying to work through is our, um, what we're going to work through is our operations advisory group. That has been a group that I've been meeting with for the last two years. Uh, what's, what's advantageous about meeting with them is it's very representative of our community. They understand a lot of the priorities that we've had around sustainability, around our buildings, around the facilities. Uh, such as Tally and how we built them and, and what the challenges are. Um, and it's, again, it's a pretty representative group and they also know how to really reach out to the community and get. out to the community and get, get some good feedback. What we want to do first is sit down and look at some of the things that are our current and future challenges, a review of our history and growth, and how we've responded to that history of, of growth that we've had, some of the things we've done well, some of the things that we could have done better. Talk about what we foresee as the future of the district in terms of our projections, in terms of what our facility needs are. Look at what our current facilities are in terms of our current capacity. I think one of the things that we, we kept coming back to was the idea that we had built for this upcoming year in that 95% capacity, and how, how did that work out for us? And I think in some, in some places, it worked out perfectly, and some other places, we're still a little tight. We'll look at the condition of our current facilities. I think that we have done a really good job of the last year and a half of beginning to catch up on many of our lingering deferred maintenance projects, so that will be part of that process. We want to talk about our plans for ECLC. Again, those renovations and repairs, anything that's going to happen with major replacement of HVA systems, HVAC systems, or things like what we did with the solar install, where we're looking at energy-saving and sustainability projects. What to do with the properties that we own? Are there any properties we could take advantage of that we've purchased, like, across the street? And what do we do, what do we do with that? And how, how do we use it? How do we best use it? What are we going to do with the modulators? I think the last time we were together, we talked a lot about modulators and, and the future of that, and I think we, we gave a good temporary solution to this year, but what are we going to do beyond that? And is it necessary for us to continue on with those? And if so, how many? And many of those issues. So I think this group will start to collect all of that information together, and then move towards building a survey for October, as well as having a face-to-face community input session, so that we can continue to gather, okay, well, from the community, what are the issues that the community is seeing out there? What are the things that we may have missed? That gives us an opportunity to get some of that upfront data to begin the process. In November, we want to meet with the group, the advisory group again, to develop that sort of overall encompassing list of issues and some potential solutions that may work with those issues, and to begin to prioritize, project for what resources we need for those things, and to get some realistic timelines together to bring back to the board in December, at the December meeting, to say, okay, here's what we've identified as our major issues. Here's what we've identified as some potential solutions, some things that we'll need to consider for resources, and then get, use that opportunity to either do in a board work session or a board meeting, some time for you all to give that same kind of input, say, okay, these are the things that we're seeing from the community, what are the things that you're seeing as a board? And then, go back out in January with a survey to get more input on the prioritization of those needs, once we finalized with you all what that, what we're going to focus on. Get some community focus groups together. I think one thing we've missed in the past are, are doing some face-to-face focus groups. We, we've done a lot of, hey, let's get together with a workshop and the dots on the walls and things, but sometimes those focus groups with a group of teachers, or with some group of city folks, or with a group of parents, or a group of administrators, those, that gives such a focused perspective that we want to bring that in and add that to our community input piece. We want to come back in February with the advisory group again, and build a, I called it in this document, a final presentation, but really a presentation for the board to begin a big discussion of, okay, we've identified, we've given some thought to the priorities, where do you guys sit as a board with all of this, and how do you want to proceed? And then, what are we going to need to go back out and look at in terms of resources? Will this all fit in with the monies that we have in place now? Do we need to look at other funding sources, those kind of things? And I think that's, that's sort of that, that either on-ramp or off-ramp to where we are at that point, and we may need to go back out again for some further community input, some things at that time to, to decide, okay, is it going to be favorable with the community if we have to go out for additional funding? This is then going to take us into March and April, where we can, if we have decided that that's where we've gotten enough input, the board is very satisfied with where we're heading, we've given some good options out there and some suggestions of things to, to look at, we could either go back out and finalize our plan, or we can, as I said, use that as that on-ramp to a different process and getting some more feedback from the community. And the goal would be to have something here back to the board in May. I think this is a fairly aggressive timeline to get a lot of the feedback that we're looking for, and there may be opportunities for us to say, hey, we, we may need to add some time to this and push this on into September or whatever for our presentation to the board, but I want you to go back out and get this piece of feedback, this piece of feedback, and this piece of feedback. That's kind of an outline of where we want to go. I'd love to get some feedback from you all and draw up a good plan that, that fits everybody's needs.
And just to emphasize, what I see as three areas the community cares a lot about, one is the modulators, would be part of this discussion. Two is the future site, potentially, of an early childhood site, and three is a track, and trying to figure out what we do with a track.
I apologize.
And that kind of facility. So just to emphasize, and Noel mentioned some of those already, but that that would be a part of this process in gathering that feedback.
Thank you so much, Noel. Are we have, are we hearing anything else about the modulars, modules besides over at Fave?
Meaning?
The...
The Oakhurst and Fave, we've heard from some neighbors of both of those about the noise. Noel actually just met with the city today or yesterday about some fencing we want to put up that can block that noise and, and moving forward with that, but that's what, that's all we've heard, and I haven't heard anything since that last conversation.
And we were taking some modulators away at Fave. Is that timeline still on track?
Yeah, so right now, we're, we're planning on taking modulators out at Fave and at Winona Park over the September break, weather and everything permitting. And then, coming back in later in the year, hopefully over the winter break, to do some removal at Glenwood as well, but that's a much more extensive project, and I think we've figured out some ways to mitigate a lot of that cost, or at least some of that cost.
All right. I think, I mean, to me, it seems like a good start here. I think, I think we're going to have to see what happens when we get the October community input.
Sure.
That's probably going to determine the direction and the speed at which we can move.
That and the looking in more detail with enrollment projections, I think, could really change the scope of what this is a talk about.
Right.
And part of my expectation with this process is, you know, okay, here's a way that I see it working in perfect world, and we get everything back the way we want it to get back, but I also expect this to be a very dynamic process, that if we say, hey, let's put the brakes on right here, let's make sure we've gotten some good feedback, or let's take a different approach to this.
Right.
It can handle that.
Yes, yes, and the enrollment projections could segue into our preview of the development report.
Yes.
Because that might, we're going to see some things we've never seen before.
Yes.
So.
True.
So, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I'm done.
You're done. My, I think the, the engagement plan looks good. The one thing that I wanted to mention, consistent with your, you know, this is a flexible plan, I'm hearing a lot, you know, from the community group that's very interested in the track, focused either on the UMC or the Legacy Park, or what other options. The one thing that I'm sensitive to from the, the many, you know, contacts that I've had, is that we, you know, part of, you know, to the extent we are trying to partner with the city, or with outside groups who might be trying to get funding, our ability to have an effective partnership is going to depend on our sort of moving to some extent on their schedule as well. And so, you know, this is a long schedule, as it should be, because it's a long plan. We need to be, at the same time, sensitive to the fact that other people are, number one, eager to get started on their own projects, but number two, they're just not going to be able to work with us if we can't bend our schedule in some respects to work with them, and...
That's a great point.
So we need to be flexible enough, have those conversations, you know, even if it's not in December.
Or, or like, yeah, just be nimble enough to react if something happens that's outside our control, that we need to be able to act on.
Be nimble enough to be able to react, and also just to understand that there are some timelines, that if we are going to partner, and the best facilities plan that we do would involve some partnerships, I think, for the good of the city. And we just need to be able to work with those folks, and that might mean advancing some pieces of this with respect to some projects.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, personally, I don't see any problem with that. It, it may be that there are pieces of this, and use the modulators, for example, there are some things we're going to be doing this year during this process to the modulars. So I see that we do have the ability to, to, to make that, make that happen if needed.
I would encourage you in particular to reach out to the, there is a fairly, very active and, and, and well-formed, you know, committee of Decaturites who are working on this, and so, let's reach out to them and...
And I've had some brief communications with that group.
And I think they're a great example of one of the stakeholder groups we'd want to touch base with, like, make an active, an active choice to touch base with.
Right, good.
Any other thoughts on that?
I, I know that, I'm, I'm trying to, to wrap my head around the fact that there is a DOE-required master facilities planning process, and I don't really want the board to, to be too hands-on in there. When I hear that there's four kindergarten classrooms at Westchester, I start to get an idea of some of those hotspots that we're going to have to deal with, and I'm sure that will be dealt with in that master facility planning process. But when we talk about a track, when we talk about an ECLC, and modulators probably falls more in the facilities planning process, we're going to be bumping up against the resources and finances that would require a bigger public conversation, so I just want us to be prepared for that. And as we, as we have a schedule which is both flexible, but also needs to be kind of largely communicated, how are we going to make sure that we really, you know, don't, we've connected the dots on all the public engagement points? We've clearly communicated, this is the type of public engagement we're having, this is the level of public engagement we're having, so that when somebody decides to bungee in at the 11th hour and, you know, try to change everything, that we've, you know, we, it's an indefensible position. You can't just arrive at the 11th hour and try to crash the party. So that's one concern, and there's, I'm trying to, to balance that against, there's the facilities planning process that you do with the DOE, and then there's the wider community process when we go beyond resources. One of the things that I think will be relevant to that is for the board to have a clear understanding of the limitations of our maintenance operations revenue and the unallocated SPOSS revenue. We've been very fortunate that our SPOSS revenues have been going up, but we saw, also have been doing a lot of projects that SPOSS is paying for. So even though I think we have $5 million per year...
I don't know off the top of my head, but somewhere around there, yeah.
They're getting $5 million from SPOSS, if that's that high. It used to be a lot less. It would be really important to know how much of that isn't allocated. I think that hits most of my concerns. I just want to make sure that, that whether it's December or February or wherever, that process happens where it becomes very clear that the community would have to agree to support a wider project, that we take the appropriate time at that point to engage as widely and as well as we can.
Totally agree. Anything else?
No.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Noel. Appreciate it.
Thanks, see you in a few minutes.
The property tax study item, as I mentioned earlier, we do not have the final report yet. I did get the feedback to them yesterday, and amazingly, that wasn't reasonable to turn it around by today. I'm just kidding, we knew that they couldn't. But it's looking really good. I think it's going to be incredibly helpful to us, and I would anticipate that we will have it for that October 1st meeting, and probably early enough, we can actually attend, attach it to the agenda. So we'll work on that. We'll also work on kind of the communication plan, because obviously, there are some folks that think this is an imminent decision, and it's not an imminent decision, but we have probably the better part of a year from now to actually talk about this and figure out what to do. So just, we're, we're working to get accurate information out to the community to make sure they know that this is the start of the process, not the end of the process, and that the report kind of kicks off the conversation, doesn't, is not, you know, we're not voting and making decisions at this point. So look for that October 1st for that report. The Board Policy 2.4 Monitoring Report, this is the one you saw the first stage of at the last meeting. We're now to Stage 2, and Lilly is going to walk us through that.
Good evening, Dr. Duty and board members, so welcome to Phase 2. As we, as we reviewed last month, this policy is really focused on our nondiscrimin, nondiscrimination policy and equitable opportunities. We talked about the fact that there are two required administrative regulations for this policy, and that includes equitable opportunities and the Equity Action Plan. So both of those regulations and all of the information that we have related to those will be reviewed with Phase 3 of the report. So as described in Phase 1, the interpretation of this policy is twofold, and includes a focus on student perception of belonging and the district's efforts to prevent and respond to discrimination. Tonight, we'll double-click on the potential sources of data, starting with the ones associated with belonging. A key source of evidence for monitoring the degree to which students feel they belong and are vital members of the school community is perception data. So for this item, we will use selected elements from the Georgia Department of Education Student Health Survey, and you'll see them there. That's pretty small, but those are some of the items that really relate to the degree to which students feel they belong, and we are able to disaggregate the data for this measure by race, gender, socioeconomic status, and special education programming. Another element that we'll focus on is really monitoring attendance, student attendance. So a student's presence is directly linked to their academic performance, and is a strong indicator of student engagement and belonging. We can, we collect attendance data across the grade bands, and the information can also be disaggregated by race, socioeconomic status, and special education programming. And this will help us to analyze, we'll be able to analyze trends and patterns in the Next, we'll take a look at the potential sources of data and evidence related to the district's efforts to prevent and respond to discrimination based on subgroup membership. So in this slide, you see some of the elements we discussed last month, that's potential options. And to look a little bit closer, we'll start with academic performance. So the district administers standardized measures for monitoring academic growth and achievement, and these can also be disaggregated by key demographic variables to determine the, the degree to which academic attainment is free from discrimination based on subgroup membership. So here, we've listed some of the data we can access, including map growth data, map Lexile scores, GMAAS data for reading in grades three through 12, and GMAAS levels for reading, math, science, and social studies. So there's a little caveat there, a little asterisk, that the data will not be available for last school year until the end of October. So given that our meeting is in Octo, October 1st, we will not be able to review that data in time for next month's meeting. Next, we'll take a look at participation. So participation in co-curricular and extracurricular activities is indicative of student engagement, and we currently have started collecting this data, and from last school year, we have participation data related to athletics and to selected student organization membership. We'll also focus on student safety data from last school year, and we'll pay very close attention to in-school and out-of-school suspensions. Those will be monitored to determine whether subgroup membership is a predictor of the frequency and duration of disciplinary outcomes. of the frequency and duration of disciplinary outcomes. Another area of focus is looking at post-secondary outcomes. And we are able to obtain information from the Georgia Office of Student Achievement related to where our students go after graduation. So we can look at the percentage of students enrolled in colleges and universities. We'll be able to monitor their progress towards a credential. We'll be able to look at the number of students that require remediation in math and reading, as well as those who have been able to complete their degree within five years post-graduation. And finally, another measure that we have access to for last school year is to look at our leader and teacher evaluations. So the LEAKS evaluation is used to assess performance in principals, our school leaders. And there is a domain, school climate, that gives us a glimpse at the degree to which the principal has created an environment that is equitable and fair to all students. And so you see some indicators there, and we can pull that data. And also, for teachers, we can look at positive learning environment. And that is an area that all teachers are rated on, and it includes the degree to which there's a well-managed, safe, orderly environment that encourages respect for all students. So here's the outline of the report. It follows what we discussed last month. I did add in a little bit of information about next steps. We had a discussion about some measures that we would like to see for future years. There are some measures that we are considering and piloting this year that we can talk about in the report, so that you will be aware of what you can expect for the next year. But as you're aware, we're only able to present on the data that we collected last school year, but there are a lot of good things that we're planning in terms of looking at ways to be able to really focus in on the elements of the policy. And just a note, Phase 3 will be presented in November due to the embargo of the data. Don't want to have, "Coming soon, coming soon, coming soon."
And a very quick turnaround between September and October meetings this year, or this month.
Does that, does that happen every year? Is there a reason to shift this a month for every year?
Because, part of it's because of our trip to Colorado.
Yeah.
So it's only two weeks.
Yeah.
But will the data, would the data have been available?
Probably will be end of October each time.
Yeah, so I mean, is this like a...
Probably reschedule it.
We could just shift it.
Yeah. Part of it, we don't know which data we're going to use for which report at the time we make the schedule. But yeah, I agree, we should just shift it in the future.
Any questions?
I'm excited to see what this becomes. There's, there's so much really helpful, insightful analysis being done here. And I'm very excited to see the next report phase. Thank you.
I have, one question is backing up to the MAP math growth and the MAP Lexiles. Is that, I, you know, there's a balance to doing both growth and kind of achievement, and I was wondering if that was an intentional choice in doing the MAP growth right next to the Lexile scores? And I guess one, I tend to overly focus on the growth to the exclusion of other things. And I was wondering if there was a way to measure, you know, to do the Lexile growth? But I can also see the benefits of it being balanced. And then, one of the slides talked about participation. It wasn't one of the bullet points, but you mentioned we already have data for participation in athletics, and I didn't quite catch clubs.
And selected clubs. So we started this process, and we'll be expanding it. But we will present the data we have for last year.
That was one of my notes that I wanted to see added, so I'm glad that it's there, even if it's not yet. And a bullet point, I'd love for it to be on, you know, one of the bullet points. And it's definitely one of the data points I would like to see. The question that came up for me with that one, whether, was whether or not participation in athletics and clubs falls under belonging or discrimination. I could see it easily being both. The reason I bring that up is the concern that if we're only looking at it through the lens of discrimination, we may miss the opportunities to develop this kind of authentic interconnected belonging opportunity. So I would just ask, you know, while you're reviewing this and working forward, if there's, you know, a way to not, to make sure that we're looking at it through both lenses? Because to me, it's an interesting thing, it's come up before in the past. And then, when you talked about the post-secondary stuff and the percent of students, the question I had there was, does that allow us to look at it through the lens of subgroups? Or is it just kind of an all-students percent of students?
So I'll be working with Heidi on that. The GOSE data is all students, but we've talked about looking at ways that we can disaggregate that and...
Okay, that'd be great.
...use it out.
I'm also very excited to see this continue moving forward. I really appreciate all the work you're doing.
Lilly, what are your thoughts on Garrett's question about the MAP growth data for math, but Lexile scores for reading, like achievement versus growth? Did you have any thoughts on that?
So I really want to be able to capture both. And I'll work with Heidi on that to see if we'll be able to capture both.
Good. Any other thoughts?
So I also think this is on the right track, so I appreciate, and I like this process. I think it's working well. The, I have one question. I'm going to save it for last, because it'll derail the rest of it.
Self-awareness is a skill, that's good.
The, a comment which is, you asked, which I appreciated, you know, I keep talking about the survey from an SBA conference. And I understand that we don't have the data, so anything about that would be in the future. I would, I continue to be interested, you know, because as we look at, you know, we're going to use the Godot Student Health Survey. That there might, I think there's other, there might be better options that we could get more meaningful results. And I...
Absolutely.
Interested in just exploring to find out if that's the case.
Maybe that could be part of our next steps in the final report.
Yes, that's the plan.
So we don't lose that.
The high school is looking at doing a pilot of it this year, so that's going to be included.
And I understand that this is based on what we've got now, so I just wanted to mention that again. On participation, I had, I, my comment was similar to Garrett's. It's funny, because as I looked at participation, I mentally put it in belonging. I agree that it's important to both belonging and discrimination. I wanted to mention, you know, I keep talking about, what do we call it, the character goals? And the buzzword, you know, the Angela Duckworth grit. For what it's worth, the survey instrument that she has developed in order to gauge whether students have grit, and it's actually used by West Point for their applications, is that one measure of grit, which is not defined as being dirty or having hard experiences life, right? It's stick-to-it-ness, perseverance, being able to set long-term goals and pursue them, is your participation in clubs. And so what she looks at is your invol, not only your participation, but your continued participation in rising responsibility within whatever it is that you choose. And so it's far more significant in her, on her test, but in my mind, too. The fact that you don't just sample clubs, although that's good, but that really, you found something. You in fact have found something that you belong to and that you're committed to and that you continue in, and that you grow in responsibility, you know, as it moves on. You grow into leadership positions and et cetera. And so I think it's, it would be interesting, as we're gathering data on participation, to keep that in mind and to track how many years of participation. And as this kid, this would be harder, but are they rising in responsibility and leadership as they go along? And that would, I mean, all of this stuff would cut across, whether it's discrimination or belonging or stick-to-it-ness. But I thought I'd mention that. My only other comment is maybe a challenge or question, we don't really need to get into it, but the interpretation says that if we create a welcoming environment and practices and policies are implemented fairly, then subgroup membership will not be a predictor of academic achievement, behavior, or participation. And I, again, just question whether that's all that we need in order to achieve that goal. You know, I think it goes beyond fairness. I think that there's some, and maybe there's just a whole lot packed into that idea about what's fair. But I think it oversimplifies some of the challenges that we have. And, you know, I think that we need, it's not just a matter of being fair, it's providing extra help and support where it's needed. It's having loaner laptops, right? It's not necessarily unfair not to have a loaner laptop program. But without the loaner laptop program, we're not going to achieve this goal.
Sure.
So...
It's hard not to use the word equitable.
Right.
When you're explaining the equitable policy.
That was just an equivalent. Overall, I look forward to the...
Thanks Lilly. All right, our next monitoring report is 2.5, and this is the first time you're seeing this one, and Noel is going to come present that for us.
Hello again. Let's see. Maybe.
Think he's pulling it up still.
Good evening. This is, this is my first go at the monitoring policy piece. So what I'm hoping for is some good feedback on this and being able to take it and get a report that works well. This is a very difficult monitoring report to address in that there's a lot of information that normally is contained in emergency preparedness, safety and security that is not meant for public consumption. And so I'm glad to entertain how we can do a report that is potentially public-facing and something that we can get to the board members in a different setting. So I'm, I am following Lilly's lead on this a little bit, and used her formatting and the way she's kind of approaching this, and came in to do my interpretation of this policy. And really, the policy itself is around making sure that we have a documented plan that's based on our best practices for crisis response. It provides a framework for security and safety infrastructure across the district. And that's really a fairly quick look at how I interpret this wording for this piece. With that meaning, making sure that we've got a good set plan out there, that we've got a good set framework for how we implement the plan and how we follow up and monitor and make sure that the plans are being done and put in place the right way. And I think a good place to jump for discussion will be into some potential sources of evidence, but I wanted to walk through three things that I put up here that I think would be very good. One is the district school safety plan itself. We've done some revamping of that plan this year. I'm working with the DAB Emergency Management and Georgia Emergency Management Groups to bring those plans into yet another iteration this year. I'm also working with the Decatur Police and Decatur Fire in that initiative as well. I met with the police chief, fire chief, and the deputy chief of emergency management for DAB over the summer, and we had a long discussion about how to move forward with this. I followed up with the, I cannot remember his title, but the assistant to the deputy chief that's working with emergency plans. And we're doing a crosswalk of all of our emergency plans over the next month to report back to them. So there's some real potential with those district safety plans for, here's our process, here's what we've done, and here are the benchmarks that we've hit, which would be not only submission and approval of those plans, but just the fact that we've had our teams meet, put them together, and discuss and get them ready for implementation. The second thing that I think would be a very good potential source of evidence of this being put in place, and I have talked about Jima coming out and doing this, and hopefully, they will not have personnel changes in many emergencies this year. We're getting our threat assessments done on each of the schools in November this year. And we've got them scheduled and ready to go. It's a two-day process that they will go through, walk our buildings with me. It takes about two hours per building, depending on size and such. And that will produce a report for us that we could, that should be a very actionable report of, you know, accolades, deficiencies, things that they might suggest we look at, that again, would be a great source for us to come back and see if we're implementing here the right way. This third piece, I really, really am still trying to get my head wrapped around how we work with our local law enforcement to do this. But I think it's extremely important for us to have, as part of this framework and as part of this process, the review and approval of our plans by the local emergency. And I would want to have something in the report as part of that process, too. And that's a very specific thing that touches those other two documents, but I think that's an extremely important piece. One of the most beneficial meetings that I have had with the city ever was preparation for one of our snow events. We had, we had a few meetings next door with all of the interested parties in the city. You know, the maintenance department from the school system, myself, the fire department, the city's public works department. We all got together and we talked about a lot of things. And when the snow event hit, things just moved along very well. And it was, it was a really nice group of folks that I wanted to continue that work with. And I think this fits nicely into making sure that that part gets into this report and into the framework. So with that said, I would love to get some discussion going and get some feedback and see where we can head with this.
I'll just start with a couple of thoughts. And I'll need some help to figure out how this will all fit together, but...
Sure.
One of my desires is to know that we are, like, that we have a schedule to regularly implement our drills at each school throughout the year, and that we confirm that they are being done. That we have a training schedule that we have planned, but that we then confirm that it's done. Some sort of like output, some report to the board to let us know, just like, as maybe a part of this monitoring report? Or maybe it's just required by this monitoring report?
That would be very easy.
This is, that's exactly where it should go. Like, we could report out, because we report, for instance, we report all of our fire drills. There's a database we have to report them to the state for, and there's certain timelines. And we have all these trainings that we require of staff related to safety. And we keep track of participation and things like that. This would be the perfect report to report out on those as a data source for the, so we'll include that in the Phase 2 of this.
Okay, because that's part of why the timing is having this report be in September each year, because it will have, we will have just started the school year, we'll have new personnel, we might have a new building, we might have modified modulars, we might have new partners or staff at the local, you know, our local partners might have new staff that we may need to re-engage with or reconnect with or connect with for the first time. So I also would like to have a review and update of who our community partners are and document that we have had sort of a kickoff, you know, annual reconnect summary of some sort, whatever you think that should look like, some meeting with them, or just making sure they have our most updated documents, whatever it is, building maps, staff contact numbers, you know, just, you know, part of safety. I know we have a good plan. I think part of the challenge is just keep making sure that we have a process to keep it up to date, you know?
That will be a problem. A lot of that stuff we already do, like, we already track, and so we'll just include it in the report.
Yeah, that would be great. I figured that we did, it's just...
Yeah, nothing you've asked for is hard to put into the report. And I think that's great feedback for us, because I take a lot of that for granted. Sometimes I think about, you know, good example, I meet with all of the, I meet with the high school, middle school principal and the SROs beginning of the year, and we go through question-and-answer sessions and talk about that stuff. So that would be a perfect...
Right, and maybe some of it is being done, but it's maybe not formally documented that it's being done.
Well, and it could be, like, I can just see, one of the pieces of evidence could be, we meet with every school every year to go through their safety plan. Here are the dates we met over the last 12 months, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is one result of the plan that you have like checklists that would be in every classroom and principal's office?
It could, like, I mean, that's a potential outcome from something like this.
Seems to me that that kind of.
Flipbooks and things like that.
Something very general, but that it's just checklist. Did you think about this and in what order? Five steps?
So yes, we have, we have that in place. We don't have down to the classroom right now. That's part of what we're talking about, we want to put in place. And I think Dr. Doody said it perfectly. Sometimes we'll produce the flip chart piece. But we have that as a school-wide part of the plan, as, as much of our update is, you know, here's, here's how you respond, here's what you do. And we meet with the principals, and this would be part of what you're talking about, is we meet with the principals regularly through the year to go over certain parts of that specifically, things like that, so, yep.
Are, are concerns regarding safety, are, how are they captured? Are they captured through like our facilities tool where people make requests that?
So, when you meet, when you say that, I'm, I'm assuming you mean things like, hey, we have a broken lock here, or we have a gate that may need to be put in here. So if it's a facilities issue, it'll be made through a facilities request or through one of the discussions that I'll have with the principal, or that Georgia might have with the principal. If it's a bigger security issue, that might be something that, that we will discuss. Superintendent, I might meet with Maggie and the principal and talk about it, or we might talk about it in cabinet. But the formal process for documenting, hey, I've got a, a lock that's not working, those kind of security issues and safety issues, those go in as maintenance requests.
So I can see how those physical things are tracked and captured, but that there could also be procedural concerns or other incidents that occur that we need to think through and address.
I can give you an example, like when we start to see patterns of like an employee injury, for instance, and maybe custodians are starting to see, we're seeing certain types of injuries. We might implement something like, okay, everyone has to be issued a back brace and, and have, and use a back brace whenever they're lifting or something like that. I think that's kind of what you're getting at, right?
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
It may not be a maintenance type thing.
Right.
It may be some other data source that's telling us there's a safety issue here that we need to address.
So how, how are those things tracked and captured? Because we may hear of them, but not, we may not be able to address them all right away, because some of them may be larger things that require planning or budget or other things, but it'd be interesting to, to maybe include in this.
Let me, let me think about it a little bit. I think that sometimes those are such, I hate to say it this way, but one-off or unique issues that they sort of become, let's deal with this issue over here. We don't have a formal way to track them, but I can, I can certainly.
The other complication is when it's a safety issue, it typically goes to the top of the list.
Right.
And I think that's one of the reasons, because I'm the same as Noel, I'm trying to think, how would we capture those? And I think one of the reasons we don't is because we jump on it right then, when it, as soon as we recognize it as an issue. So that's good to think about.
Yeah. I was just thinking, there could be some larger ones that are more like future planning that could be a part of the monitoring report where if we're going to say, for example, upgrade security systems or whatever it is that could require planning and budget, maybe we include, whether it's public or not, you know, we can decide what the level of sensitivity is, but there could be maybe a, a a mechanism for tracking those kinds of things in this monitoring report.
Yeah, that's good to think through. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things that, that comes up is, again, this is one of those things where the Georgia Department of Education has requirements, and one of our requirements in board policy is that you meet their requirements. So most of this stuff is already done.
Yeah.
But given the state of the nation and the security issues and the shootings and things, it's such a, a, an important issue to so many people that I think the, the difficulty that, that we face is that, you know, a, a monitoring report on security and safety is, you know, Louis has talked about, these reports are a, a great opportunity to be public awareness, communication about how the school is doing on these things. But how does it serve the dual purpose of, you know, meeting the Georgia requirements, which may get into levels which you don't share, because to share it would violate safety and security? And how do you, you know, what are the things that are appropriate to share in a public document? And I think, you know, FEMA and of course GMA is Georgia FEMA have, you know, some, some guidance that might be helpful in those cases about what are the public-facing things about, you know, you see this whenever there's a hurricane or a school shooting, what are the, the lines of coordination, coordination, what are the lines of communication? Where do parents go? What are those parts that, that are appropriate that even though it might not be exactly a monitoring report, I think is going to end up needing to be in the monitoring report, just because this is what people will end up reading. And I guess, you know, there's planning, and then there's execution. And I think at some point, the board is going to want the monitoring report to have a component that, you know, qualifies and quantifies how well are we executing? And some of that might be executing the things we're already required to do, exercises. And some of it might be at an appropriate level for public consumption. You know, how are we executing in response to actual incidents? Because again, the best plans don't survive contact with reality. And you can always, you know, close the loop and say, how could we have done better? And maybe that's not a board role, but I think it's important for the board to know that just as the airline industry and hospitals have grand rounds, that we have that continuous feedback loop. And I, I say this with, with, you know, the, the cautionary note is, you know, people need to be able to air the dirty laundry in a safe environment where you can learn from experiences and improve and do better. And unfortunately, that's not what we do in public in America. It's just unfortunate. But it's important, I think, for the board to know that, you know, what kind, at some level, that's appropriate, what kind of incidents are happening? And how well are we executing? How well was the plan? And how well did we execute? Did we go above and beyond? Because maybe the plan didn't quite cover this, but we still did a great job. Those types of things. So I think that's one component I'd like to see potentially added to this report, is some kind of quality, quantity of execution in response to real incidences and exercises.
Yeah.
That's a great point. And also just a reminder, I believe our advice from our attorney was that there are components that we could discuss in exec session of things like this. And we will double-check that, but I do think there are aspects, for instance, like after any major incident, we debrief the next day and go through and figure out what worked, what didn't, what do we need to change, what was confusing for people, et cetera. And part of this monitoring report could be, hey, for those one, two, three events that happened over the last 12 months, what did you learn from it? Right? And that would be something we'd probably do in an exec session environment. But yeah, I do think that would be a good use of a report like this.
I, he took words out of my mouth. So the, this might be a little contrarian, but I'll go there anyways. The, the safety side of this makes me, because there's a lot of emphasis on the emergency preparedness and emergency responsiveness, and totally get that. What I've sometimes seen and get a little bit of concern about is how we respond in our day-to-day philosophy about what risks are appropriate risks. And I think it's very easy, especially when we're talking about the emergency side of it, to let that perhaps turn the dial too hard. And I'm, and I'm wondering, what's the appropriate way to set direction, give guidance on, well, so what is a reasonable level of risk? What is the, 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 um, the balance between experience, true experience of life versus, and also individual liberties, I'll call it, right? And that, that balance, because that's, that's part of developing well-rounded students. So I, I don't know if that's really in this or not, but when I read the, the safety piece of that, I think a lot of those issues are trying to be addressed there, and so how do we make sure that we give appropriate balance to that?
I'm glad you brought that up, because I've made that note, that freedom from versus the freedom to.
Yeah.
You need to make sure that you have the right balance.
I think that comes up a lot in our discussions around facility planning, around emergency planning, around just how we deal with any of this stuff. That does come up quite a bit. And it's a tough balance sometimes, you know, when you're talking about the safety piece, you want to just keep everybody cocooned in there. But then how do you have open and wonderful, warm, inviting buildings? And how do you have open, good-looking classrooms? How do you bring in the balance of, you know, natural light and too many windows? Those are, those are things that come up all the time in that same vein. Where is that level of acceptable risk? And I think you do have to be careful with that. I think we do a good job of discussing it quite a bit. I don't know that it is in here, but I think it is definitely a very valid point.
Other thoughts? All right, the, we pulled the development report from consent agenda for discussion, so if we want to jump to the development report.
Thanks Noel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want me to step here for that?
Yeah.
Having a brief discussion.
This is what happens when you don't let me talk for months at a time. This is the brains behind this operation.
And Heidi, I just wanted to verify, I noticed it says that this, these are the data accurate through August thirteenth, is that right?
So there haven't been any changes.
Okay.
So it's, I think I updated it, I thought I had updated it as of September fourth, but we, it's the same report.
Okay. The, I'll just point out something that jumped on at me is this Amely-Decatur count. The, you may recall, what we have noticed is that you just count the number of two or more bedroom apartments, and that's how many kids you're going to get, divided by, divided by two, and that's how many kids you're going to get. And there are 125 two-or-more-bedroom apartments. So that's telling me we're going to get about 56 kids just out of that one development, which when you think about it, that's about 10% a 10% increase in our enrollment, or a 1% increase in our enrollment, which is significant, right? Like, that's, that's two full classes worth of kids coming out of that one development, and then you start looking at all the other ones. It's incredible.
Yes.
How many of these are underway?
So there's different headings, so the, on page two are the, they're still in the planning and proposal stage. On page three, they're under construction.
I'm looking at Moda, for example, which is right near me.
So that's under construction.
But it's two-thirds occupied.
I've heard that there's been some issues, and it's no longer under construction, is what I've heard.
It's, it's under construction again.
Is it?
It's been off again, on.
On again, off again, off again, on again.
But there's, but there's already.
There's a lot of them sold already, I mean.
Right, and they're occupied.
Yeah, they just did it in phases.
But is that the case with all of them? I mean, like Amely's not yet, it looks like it's built, but it's not occupied.
Does not have occupation to it in partial.
So is there a way for us to capture things like Moda that it's under construction, but it's half-occupied?
So one of, one of my intentions is once we get all of the bedroom counts in there, we're also trying to update the streets for all the apartments so that we can run how many students live there. So we can see how many kids actually live there, and then that way we can kind of look at, see if our ratio is holding true for apartments. We can look a little bit at townhomes and single families. So we're, hopefully, over the course of the next several months, we'll, we'll have more data. But that would say how many kids are actually there. In terms of what we learn at the city meetings, we're not really learning who's living there, we're just learning what's happening.
I think what I'll do is, uh, next week when we go to the meeting or, or the subsequent meeting beyond that, we'll talk to them about if there is a, if there's a accurate way to track that.
I mean, like Moda, they must have gotten certificates of occupancy or something for a certain number of units. There seems to me there must be a way to capture that.
Exactly. So for townhomes, I, I think we can definitely get the information for some of it. I think when you look at the, I call it the TV project, what's the one up on the corner, Tally?
Thrive.
The, I apologize, my brain.
The Thrive Development on Tally Street?
No, the Thrive Development is another one I wanted to bring up, because that's definitely beyond the planning proposal stage. The Thrive Development has quite a few, they've got whole finished buildings there, so.
Yeah, so the Courtenay is what they're calling it now. So part of that building has, just sitting in the discussion, it's part of that building has occupancy. Most of it does not, but it's also, it's also divided into two different projects. It's on the top of page four. So that's something that, let, let us ask about it and see what we can get in terms of accuracy.
Partially complete.
Some of it too is that.
Ninety-nine two veterans.
Like when we get the, the information, the plaits that say like, here's an address now where people may live. We move it, that's what I've been doing, is move it over to like, okay, some people are living here now. So that works really well for the things that are brand-new. The ones that are were something and then they're being changed into something else, I don't, I didn't, we don't really, we weren't really clocking that. It was just like, something's going on, so we'll put it on the list.
Yeah, I think you look at page two, that really is very representative of stuff that is very fluid and very could change report to report, could disappear off the report, could come back on the report a few months later kind of thing. As you go through the subsequent pieces, it gets a little more solid and much less fluid.
Do you get any sense of, so this is a monthly meeting, is that right?
No, it's every week.
It's a weekly meeting.
Wow.
And do you, is it possible to put a, I mean, I'm sure it's fluid, nobody knows, but you could, you know, you might, on this chart, does it have stage? I mean, you could, you know, or maybe projected.
Very ambiguous.
Projected occupancy date, something like that.
So there, really, I mean, one thing that I've learned in a lot of this is new to me, that the stuff that is planning or proposed keeps changing, and even the stuff that's under construction, something will be underway, but oh, there was a stop order, work order, they sold the property to a different company, and now they're looking for a permit for a totally different type of thing. So until it's done, like everything keeps changing. So like the, even the proposals on like how many units they think they're going to have, to how many they end up in the end is often different.
Could we add a column that just is, says like percent occupied, so that if it's not? Yeah.
That's very difficult.
Because I'm thinking, for the ones that are pre-leasing, like some of the bigger ones over by Avondale Marta and Callaway site, they're pre-leasing. So the leasing office would know how many they've leased and when those leases are starting, starting.
But if they, if folks aren't actually living there right now, then it's probably not considered occupied, like.
True. So I'm just wondering, I mean, it would give us some, some idea of whether it's actually happening. Okay.
I get, I see where you're trying to go with it, and that makes total sense.
I don't know if they have that information.
I know what to ask.
Okay.
Some of it will be hard. If we're dependent on the, the, for instance, leasing offices, we have found it's very challenging to get information from them, because there's no incentive for them to provide it. And they'll react very differently if you call and say, hey, this is the school district, how many one, two, and three-bedroom apartments do you have that are occupied or not? As opposed to if you call as a potential person saying, hey, I'm interested in moving there. What kind of occupancy rate do you have? And look, how many bedrooms do you have? You know, they just react very differently.
Sure. I guess, and I understand, like, when they're in the planning phase, things are more fluid, but once they get to a certain point, like they're built and pre-leasing, maybe there's at least some indication, we can say, like, coming online in the next six months or next 12 months, just to differentiate that from the things that are maybe three to five years off, you know?
Right.
Yeah. It can still be hard, because it can change from week to week, month to month.
It does, it does change a lot. But we're, I mean, believe it or not, this is a more organized version, like we, we had several. Well, part of it is as something is being, that's why we put also known as, it's like they're sitting in the meeting and people are calling the same property six different things. So people in the community think that six different huge buildings are coming up, but it's really just one. So, so I think just trying to kind of clock.
I think that was a great addition to this, is capturing that.
That's great. I mean, this is.
The aliases.
Formally known as.
They're sitting in a meeting one day and they're talking about something, and then you sit in the meeting next week and you're thinking, well, I've heard this issue before, but they're using totally different names.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think as you get to those, those developments listed on page four, that's really where, heaven, that's where it's really super solidified, even though some of those, I mean, the first four or five on there are very brand-new, put in place, they're probably not fully occupied yet, but those are things that we've got a bunch of, much. put in place, they're probably not fully occupied yet, but those are things that we've got a bunch, much better handle on. So I think it is just a handful of stuff that is really the under construction and then the, in concept.
Yeah, it's kind of just for us to know which ones are fully occupied and we're already servicing the students versus where's the line for the things that are, you know, not occupied yet and we have to be planning for in the next twelve months.
We'll try to delineate that.
Yeah.
And I think if it helps, like page two is the stuff that the city folks felt comfortable, like these things are really gonna happen. Like the things that are just ideas that didn't, they don't make the list.
Yeah, okay.
We have to recognize that, you know, the, the city and the ordinances and the planning commission, if, if people follow the laws and follow the rules, they can do whatever they wanna do after things get approved, as long as
There's a lot more latitude than people would think.
Well, I suggest we uh terminate this discussion.
Well, can I plug in, just, the, the comment I wanna plug in is, is that I hope that um we can get to the point where we can connect the dots between this and that whole two-bedroom equals so many students and the Excel spreadsheet, as long as this eventually connects back to those. And we can use both the upcoming stuff and actually look at what's happened and what did it really turn into? As long as we can keep
I think we're getting closer to that. It's still ways off, but we're getting closer.
And I really appreciate this because this is a lot of hard work.
Yeah, it is. So thank you very much for, for getting to this point and um what, what can we expect going forward? What's the frequency of this report and
So we're gonna have it once a month?
It'll come at every meeting.
Okay.
Yep, we'll bring whatever most recent data we can.
Okay.
So hopefully as, as we get, gather more of our data, some of these other columns that are in the fantasy place will be added and
One last thing, I would really love to be able to see going forward, given this, how many of our new enrollments are from new developments each year?
Oh yeah, that'd be interesting.
Because we're, we're finally flattening out and it would be really unfortunate if we shot back through the roof because of new developments.
Well, and, and I second Garrett's comment on this being the, kind of the basis for our further work with that spreadsheet that we did work with the city to create and we've executed it successfully before. But we need to do it for each upcoming development after they're at a certain point where we can actually tangibly count things. But also it gave us the ability to, to form an opinion or at least basically a financial opinion upon uh which to base on each of these proposed developments. Whether it's going to be, um, are, is the school system going to be in the black or the red because of the proposed development? And the proposed distribution of one, two or three bedroom apartments. And that gave us an opportunity to at least provide that feedback, which has been requested from us before, from commissioners as to what kind of impact would you see this having on the school system? And that seemed to work. And then I think it's just a matter of now of making it a, a fluid process where we are systematically doing this and agreeing with our counterparts over in the city that it's our, our tool for, for
And we're also playing musical chairs, right? Because there're gonna be new counterparts sitting at this table in a couple of months. And new counterparts sitting at the city commission's table, so it may be a, a timely thing to circle back to in the beginning of the next year.
I think that'd be good. And we do have a newer city manager too, who's a good partner of ours.
And I will say the folks have been really helpful at getting us whatever information we ask for.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, they talk about a lot of other, you know, uh, like all the things that happen in the city and like it, there's all those ideas about affordable housing and they have a whole task force and there's, there's a lot of stuff that's going on.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you both. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Uh, real quickly, the future dates, we've got fall break coming up, September twenty-three to twenty-seven. Don't forget our next board meeting is October first, uh exec session at five-thirty, regular meeting at six-thirty. Uh, because October ninth to eleventh, we're all going to the competency-based education summit and Jane is joining us as well, so that's awesome, um, in Denver. And then October twenty-second is our board work session and remember that will be a continuation of the conversation we had at the last work session. And I believe we decided to focus on the character piece of the ends policies, if I remember correctly. I think that's it.
May I, uh, I guess one new business, um, I would love to be able to hear from Allison uh, on what we've heard now, two meetings in a row regarding the rent pro recycling program.
For the composting, um, definitely we can do an update on that. We probably won't have it by the October meeting, but we could do that after that. Um, Noel met with um Claire Schach Snyder and another representative, um, and so he's working on that right now.
Okay, great, fantastic. Thank you.
I think so.
Alright.
Thanks, everybody.
So is the plan for the recycling, are they gonna recycle onsite?